One minute warning. I'd like to call our City Council to order. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance this evening being led by Councilmember Lamb.
Thank you, Mayor. I've never had the opportunity to lead the Pledge of Allegiance, so I thought I would do it tonight. So, thank you. All right. Will the audience please rise? Please repeat the Pledge of Allegiance after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May be seated.
Thank you, Councilmember. The first item of business will be our citizen comments tonight. If you would like to speak to one of the public hearing issues, they will be a little bit later after communications, and you'll have that opportunity. If you didn't want to take up your time then, you have the opportunity now. Everyone that would like to address council can take three minutes and address council with their concerns. So with that, I'll open up citizen comments at this time. So, anyone wishing to address the council, please come forward.
I might as well start. Dave Newton. I'll take three minutes. It's fine. You have my information. I'm here to speak about the Theater Community Center, which is a surprise to you, I'm sure. We have pushed this for 20 years, and for the last few months, a few weeks ago, I was told that the council hadn't given specific direction. So, I talked to each of you individually during the last week, and the question was where we wanted to put this. As I talked to each of you, four of you said, "Put it at the Sugar Factory if we're going to build a less expensive building." The other three said either 7800 South or the Sugar Factory. So, it seems to me you have a direction of which way to go. So, what do we do now? Number one, we need to do an RFP for an architect who knows and understands metal buildings and specifically insulated panel construction. And then have them develop a core, which is similar to this model that I've brought in here tonight, and I'll leave that with you. The idea is that it could be done in phases, if necessary. It could be done modularly, but the idea is to build the basic core and then build on that if we don't have the money to do the whole thing. Secondly, then, we get a contractor to bid that core facility and with the secondary modules, the community modules, as added to that core. And see where we're at. And if we do that, then we can figure out exactly where we're going. And we add all the little details later, such as the theater seating, the theater lighting and sound. Those deals can come afterward. We can do them as separate RFPs. The city could act as general contractor in those type of things, by that way saving money. We can also have the city do some of the exterior infrastructure like we did at the Veridian Library. So, there's a precedent there. So, that is my suggestion that we move ahead. Justin Stoker called me yesterday, and we set up a meeting with him and Corbin for Monday at 3:30 here. I'm sure any of you who would like to join, you would be welcome, as long as there aren't more than three of you. And lastly, I want to announce publicly that I'm going to be running for mayor. No, not mayor. I'm going to run for the two-year council seat. So, I hope to be there with some of you next year. Thanks.
Mayor, may I just ask, the model that's in the... May it be left behind? May we keep that? Thank you. Anyone else that would like to address council this evening? Seeing that, I will close the citizen comments and move to communications. And our city manager stepped out, so we'll go to our deputy city manager.
To catch me off guard, I'm not aware of any communications at this time. Is there one? Okay.
Ryan.
Just real quick, just a reminder, Comcast Cares Day is this Saturday. Starts at 7:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. There'll be a light breakfast and lunch served. Registration will be handled at each project site. Just a reminder. That's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you. Any of the council members would like to... Councilmember Burton.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to echo what Brian said about Comcast Cares Day. In fact, I'm going to be at one of them, the one on Teton Estates. So, if any of you guys, not just a breakfast, it's a hot breakfast. We'll be cooking breakfast there. So, if you want a hot breakfast and a free t-shirt and a free lunch and be able to help clean up West Jordan, come over to Teton Estates on Saturday, Teton Estates Park, Saturday. Registration's between 7:00 and 8:00. We start working at 8:00. We have lunch at noon. Okay, a couple of things that I did since our last council meeting. On April 16th, I went to a West Side Discussions meeting with Senator Mike Lee, was held with several of the West Side cities. On April 18th, I attended the Airport Advisory Board. And a couple of things I learned in that meeting is the Air National Guard has seven new aircraft. So, you've probably been hearing some of them. That's the sound of freedom. We like that. Also, they reported at that meeting that our airport here in West Jordan has exceeded its activity of last year by 10%. And they expect the growth to continue there, and they are working on getting the school back over there again. So, that was good news. Also, on April 17th, I attended the Events Committee meeting. At that meeting, we discussed the Easter egg hunt that I went to after that, and then some other events that are coming up soon. On April 22nd, I went to the West Jordan Youth Theater and saw, and then there were none. It was a lot of fun. I enjoyed watching that, and Derek Dale came back, by the way. April 23rd, I attended the West Jordan Chamber of Commerce Government Actions Committee meeting. On April 24th through the 26th, I went to the Utah League of Cities and Towns Midyear Conference. And there were some fantastic things that it would take too long to express what I learned there, but several of you were there. April 30th, I went to the Salt Lake County Council meeting, part of it, where they were talking about Daybreak Building Communities, not Neighborhoods. They're reporting on the success of Daybreak and how that worked out. And I emailed the council some notes I took at that meeting. And then, last night, we had a council planning commission workshop, which was fantastic. I think we accomplished a lot of good things there. And then Saturday, it's May 1st, it's Comcast, earlier today, it was Comcast Cares Day pre-event meeting, which I attended that to get ready for our Comcast Cares Day on Saturday. Tomorrow, I will be joining the Jordan River Commission. They are taking a field trip right here in West Jordan. They're going to go over to the river and check out the Big Bend project that's going there. And Chuck will be there showing that off and showing all the rest of people in Salt Lake County the fantastic things that are happening here in West Jordan over the river. That's all I have for now, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to be able to say that I went to all the meetings that Councilmember Burton went to, but I went to a few key ones. But mainly, I wanted to give a report back to the council briefly for those that were not able to attend the Utah League of Cities and Towns Conference last week. One of the very interesting things that I heard was a new bill. I shouldn't say a new bill. A bill that was passed that allows cities to have some planning opportunities. So, what it's called is it's called a Public Infrastructure District, or PID. And I attended one of the courses there on that one, as many of you that were there did. And what that does is that allows a... I think this will help with some of the stresses that we have with growth in the city. It allows a parcel of land that's owned by a property that has to have 100% participation to do this. So, let's say you have 200 acres. That 200 acres can form a public infrastructure district, and that helps offset some of the costs for roads and water and sewer. It's not renewable, so it's a bond that the developer works with, with the city to put in the public infrastructure. And once it's paid off, then it's expired. It's not something that's renewed like general obligation bonds. And so, it's very intriguing, and there's stuff on that. And I think some we're going to talk about either Scott or something in the future. But I think it has a great ability to help us with the growth, with the stresses that we have on the systems for water and sewer and roads as we face this rapid growth in Salt Lake County that's affecting us as well. So, there are a lot of others. That's the one that stood out in my mind. And I know Rob and I chatted with the person who gave the presentation afterwards, as well as with Senator Handereg. So, anyway, I think there's some great things coming. Also, there's been a lot of emails back and forth about the odors that are occurring out in District 4. And so, I'm working on that and had some great dialogues today with some residents on that. So, a lot of things happening. So, thank you. That's what my report is for today, Mayor.
Councilmember Lamb.
Thank you, Mayor. While all of you were having fun in St. George, I was having fun in Reno with Corbin. Corbin and I, as invited by the EDCU, which is the Economic Development Corporation of Utah, invited West Jordan City to attend a tour of a megasite in Reno. Now, a megasite, from what they call it, is basically a big industrial park. And when I say big, think of the whole city of West Jordan, and a little bit bigger was this industrial park. So, we're not going to see a megasite here in West Jordan. But EDCU, which looks for economic development in Utah, and also GOED, which is the Governor's Office of Economic Development, asked us in Salt Lake City to attend with them. And I think that's a really good thing, because I don't know if they would have invited us two or three years ago, because number one, we weren't members of it, and number two, we weren't on their radar. But it's a good thing now, because we're on their radar, and as stuff comes in, they're thinking of West Jordan as a place where they can send economic development that will be great for us. Just a few quick highlights. So, Reno and Sparks are in their own county, separate from this other county where the megasite was. And at this megasite, this land took up half of their county and was probably 95% of the revenue for their city there. They had companies such as Tesla, Walmart, Google, a security site. There were just so many of them. And this Tesla building, their building, was so big that they housed 12,000 jobs in just this one warehouse building. Now, I don't see us ever bringing in a building that big into West Jordan, but there is opportunity there with our industrial area just west of Mountain View Corridor and out there on our west side. And I think it's a great opportunity that we were invited to this. And if you guys want more details, Corbin and I both have details of that trip, and we can talk about it. I thought it was great to go see. I don't know if we'll ever get Tesla here. It'd be great. But it was an amazing facility. They wouldn't let us in, because we had to have permission to go in, and it would take like two weeks for us to get permission to go in. So, maybe next time in Reno, we'll have to do that. Then, real quick, I wanted to talk about an update on the playground. I asked Corbin to give me some details today about how the playground is going. So, I had a neighbor of mine call me probably about a week ago, and he said, "We went to West Jordan. The park was gone." So, a lot of people still don't know it's gone, but when they do hear about what we're doing, the new playground will be arriving shortly later this year. The playground equipment has been ordered, so that's the good news. We are putting out to bid the surface and the fencing that will go around it. So, that has not been put out to bid. So, that's going to have to come back to us as a council. But the good news is, after the rodeo is over in July, that's when we'll start putting everything together and start getting the playground. So, hopefully, we'll see maybe roughly, what do you think, Corbin, October-ish, maybe? If we get everything put in place and everything's good to go. So, I'm excited about that. So, I just wanted the public to know, and I'm sure the council's heard. The playground is on its way. Takes a little longer than we'd want it to, but it's going to be a great playground when it's done. Thank you.
Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor. Like has already been addressed by several of us here, Utah League of Cities and Towns Conference was last week. Oh, first, before I get to that, I want to say thank you to Public Works and everybody involved. The stoplight is going in at 6700 South. There are poles up. There are... I think they installed the horizontal poles today. There's like, it's like, it's happening. It's cool. It only took me four years, so awesome. But I was in St. George and for the Cities and Towns Convention, like many of us. And while I was there, I was struck by the reputation that West Jordan now has compared to when I was there two years ago. It is night and day. And I actually came home, and as I was struck by that and thinking about that, I was sitting at home Sunday night, and I thought, "Wow, this is really kind of remarkable." So, I tweeted that, "What a difference." And the governor's deputy chief of staff replied to that tweet and said, "I agree with your assessment. West Jordan is far better off than it was two years ago." So, I just want to, it's kudos to our administration, our city manager, the seven of us, the way we're working together. All of that plays into this. So, I just wanted to say that it's been quite the ride for the last four years to kind of see how things have gone from where they were to where they are. And we're moving forward with great, great big strides, and it's being noticed at the state level. So, dovetailing into what Councilmember Lamb said about how we're getting noticed and invited to things, the changes that we're making are working. So, I just wanted to pass that along to everybody.
Councilmember Whitelock.
I just wanted to welcome Mrs. Grant's class from West Jordan High School. You might not appreciate the fact that she had you come, but I appreciate that. Because the way our country and our city and our state work best is when we have citizen involvement. So, kind of look around you and realize how few citizens are here. How few of those seats would be filled if you weren't here tonight? That's not uncommon, and that's unfortunate, because then we don't have the opportunity to hear what the citizens want unless we, and several of us do. We look at Facebook. We ask people. But it's hot, for me, it's always nice when citizens come to share their feelings, even when they might not agree with me. It's a good thing to do. So, hopefully, you take away from this more than "Got that assignment done." So, thank you for being here. I also, because Councilmember Burton spoke before the scouts got here, or he would have done this. So, I want to welcome the scouts as well. It's great to have you here. I know you're here also for that box that says "Merritt Badge." But whatever gets you here, because the first city council meeting that I attended, I attended with my 11-year-old son. And that's what made me say, "Oh, my gosh. I better start paying attention to what these people are doing." Because a comment was made that wasn't very good. And so, it's important that you pay attention. And you can follow us on Facebook. You can watch us on Facebook Live. So, there's lots of ways that you can find out what's going on in our city. But welcome to all of you and to those citizens that are here.
Thank you. And the one thing I wanted to report on was, I know Councilmember Whitelock and I went to a groundbreaking for a new elementary school in West Jordan last week. And it was pretty exciting. The governor came. He signed several education bills at that location as well. So, that was an exciting thing. A lot of the neighbors were very happy to see that groundbreaking. And those schools out on the west side are getting overcrowded, and so they were excited to see that happening. We'll now move to our public hearings. We'll start with Item 5A. Receive public input and consider for approval Resolution 19-78 regarding funding recommendations of the West Jordan CDPG/Home Committee for fiscal year 2019-2020 as part of the Fiscal Year 2019-2020 Annual Action Plan. Chuck Tarver.
Great. Thank you, Mayor and council. Back again, I think this is year 19 I've done this presentation. The nice part about the council that we have tonight, I think, let me count this. One, two, five. Either five or six of you guys have actually sat on my committee at some point in time. This year, we had Councilmember Whitelock sit on the committee. And it's a pretty good process where we have a local resident committee combined with local employees, planning commission member, and a city council member. And we invite the applying agencies in. Every year, we actually require them to come in, make a presentation of about five to 10 minutes. Then, we have about a 10-minute question-answer session with them. It's very casual, very relaxing, and we get a lot of information. And that way, it works a little bit better, and we get more information than three minutes at a time at city council. And the agencies tend to like it. We like it as staff. And I think so far, most of the council members which have sat on the council, on the committee, have actually enjoyed it and actually learned a lot of things from it. Anyway, this year, to the point. Tonight is our annual public hearing. This year, we're looking at funding coming up, which will start in July the 1st, 2019, and go for the year. This year, we received a reduction in funding of $41,620. What HUD does every year is comes in, looks at the population growth, looks at the housing conditions across the country, and reevaluates every city, every county throughout the country. Almost every city in Utah received a reduction because the quality of the homes here, the age of the housing stock, and some of the income limits there. Up until this year, we probably hadn't had a reduction. We've had increases probably for the last seven years in the program. So, this is not a major shock to get hit with a reduction this year. This year, we received $570,986. And we will combine that with prior year funds, which we will be carrying over from the Down Payment Assistance Program. And we have $40,000 in our housing rehab loan from the revolving loan that we carry over every year. We receive very similar applications this year as we have in the past. And I'll go with the funding recommendations from the committee. South Valley Sanctuary for their own case manager here at City Hall and at the shelter. Recommended funding was $14,305. Legal Aid Society of Salt Lake City with their domestic violence legal assistance program. Recommendations $11,305. You'll see a pattern. We reduced everyone down about equal amounts instead of having round numbers. That's why we ended up with the $305 on most of them. Family Support Center for their Midvale Crisis Nursery Program. Recommendations $11,305. The Road Home for the homeless shelter operations for this coming year is $7305. As they move forward with the construction of the new shelters, some of their changes will come in future requests instead at this point in time. The Community Action Program has two requests this year as last year. One's the Emergency Food Pantry, which the committee always looks at as a very important facility in the area. It's located in Midvale. Recommended at $7305 this year. The other Community Action Program is a rental assistance program. Recommended at $9305. And this program provides counseling and assistance to prevent people from being evicted from their rental situation. It's only a temporary thing, and it's mainly for counseling. The new one this year is the Senior Charity Foundation, which provides dental care to seniors. Most of the seniors they provide are located at the Sugar Factory Senior Housing Facility over on Sugar Factory Road or on the Jordan Valley Senior Housing Project located at 3200. It's a mobile dental clinic where they come in, takes the chairs, all the dental equipment into the facility, and operates a one-day dental facility. Recommended funding there this year is $7305. Big Brothers Big Sisters continuing their at-risk mentoring program for youth in the neighborhood and in West Jordan. Recommended is $9305. The In-Between that we funded last year for counseling service provides services for people with hospice care needs during their last days of life and hopefully extend them a little bit, give them a little more comfort. Funding this year is $8195. The Odyssey House came in with a roof replacement. Last year, we did some air-conditioned units for them. This year, the committee recommended, because of the low amount and the location and sandy. And we do have a minimal request requirement of $5,000. They came in at $2160, and recommendation was not to fund them this year. And that gets us, we can allocate 15% of our funds for public services, which gave us a grand total of $85,635. And we funded every one of those dollars or recommended every dollar to public service agencies. The assist program doesn't fall under that cap, and it's unrestricted monies that we have. And we funded them, or we recommended $175,000 for emergency home repairs and access improvements. This is an increase of $25,000 over last year because of the cost of construction and the need within West Jordan is increasing rapidly every year. The final requests are, of course, from the city of West Jordan for program administration. Recommendations 113, which covers staff time, travel, training, anything tied to the CDPG administration. The second program is our housing rehab loan program, which we fund every year with 40,000, set aside 40,000 every year out of our revolving loan account. And then, if we have one home, four homes or three homes every year, we have the funds there to provide rehab loans to them. Our Home Buyer Assistance Program, we reduced down the amount of the requests from this year to $5,000, because we have $50,000 left over from last year. Down payment has really dropped down because of the requirements, of the income requirements, and the down payments out there that's required today compared to the cost of homes has kind of slowed the program down. We have few and fewer people qualify because of the income limits. So, we're just carrying over money this year instead of adding new money. we're just carrying over money this year instead of adding new money to it, except for the five thousand. The balance of our funds, other than our one oh eight loan program, we're kicking into our ADA ramp program, thirty-two thousand, three forty-six, which will combine with some past funds from last year and add to work with the city overlay program this coming year, probably in January, to do another project. And the last recommendation, and when I say last, the good news is, is actually the last payment number probably twenty on the section one oh eight loan of the West Jordan Senior Center will be paid out this coming year, and we'll be debt-free on that. The one sixty will be the final payment there. Actually, when I came here, I kind of oversaw the construction on this project back in two thousand, two thousand and one, and honestly, didn't think I'd still be here to see the final payment. So I'm pretty excited about this one. Because of the change of the public hearing, some of the agencies had other obligations this week with conferences, training, and things of that nature. And a couple of them did send in a couple of comments, just real quick. One from Beth at the Senior Charity Foundation. They're the new applicant this year. Very excited. Beth used to work at the YWCA, and they're excited about the recommendation and the committee process. The other one we received was from Jordan, from Big Brothers Big Sisters, and just, you know, thanking you for the recommendation, thanking the committee for the work as well as city council. They just wanted to send something to you since they're not here. As far as, I'm not sure if anyone's came tonight, but that's, I'll kind of open it up for questions or what comes next, Mayor.
First one, Councilmember Burton.
I have a question or two, if I may.
Yes.
So tell me about the overlay project.
Which one?
Overlay.
Overlay? Oh, okay. Now, the city has their road overlay program. They do every year through CIP, where we can come in with CDBG funds and do access curb cuts in those areas first. Then that frees up any overlay money, which would go to those curb cuts to do more overlay in that area.
Okay. So we're not doing the overlay with this money. We're just doing the ADA ramps for the sidewalks, is that correct?
Correct. Correct.
Okay.
Yes. It's, it just allows us to extend the overlay.
Okay. But the overlay is done with other funds?
Yes. City funds is budgeted every year.
Okay. And then tell me about the assistance for people for their down payment. Is that a loan or is that a grant?
We call it a deferred loan. And what happens to it is after five years, it's completely forgiven. So every year, they live in the home, we forgive twenty percent of it. After five years, it's free and clear. And at that point, they can sell it with no payback to us. If they do move during that time, we just prorate it based on the number of months that they live there. Once we recover that money, we'll use that money to make new loans and everything. We just keep it revolving out there.
And what other loans do we have? I think you mentioned another loan. Is that correct?
The other loans we have are housing repair loans or housing rehabilitation loans that we make to anyone that's lower income, low to moderate income, and to seniors. The senior loans are zero percent interest, and they're deferred until they actually pass away, sell the home, or move to a different situation. And then at that point, the city recoups those funds. The other loans made to non-seniors or non-handicapped people usually run about a three percent interest, and we have payments on those every month, which we recoup those funds, put into our revolving loan account, and continue to make future loans out of them.
Very good. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Councilmember.
Thank you, and I appreciate the work that you do. When I, before I lived in this city, I served probably about ten or fifteen years ago on the county CDBG, and very familiar with the process. So I appreciate all the work that you do. I just had a question about four slides back.
Okay.
If we can go.
Sure.
I don't know who's running it. Right, right there. The very bottom one, Community Action Program Housing Assistance Rental Program.
Yes.
How does that work? Because right now, I think a lot of folks are getting, there's a lot of stresses or stressors on being able to find affordable housing and renting. So does this help them make rent? Does this help them find subsidized housing? Tell me a little bit about that program.
Okay. Yeah. And very good point. I mean, the rental situation, I don't have to tell you. Everyone knows the rental situation is extremely difficult in the state of Utah at this point in time, getting worse every day. What Community Action does is basically works with a school district and identifies potential renters from their students which are in jeopardy of losing their place to live. And this is handled through the different food programs, counseling programs through the school districts. Then they recommend and suggest that they contact the Community Action Program. What the rental assistance program does is, first of all, comes in, provides counseling to these people, see if they can work out a budget, see what their situation is. And then if it's to the point where they're about to be evicted from that unit or something, then they'll step in and do one or two months of financial assistance on the rent payment to keep them in that home until they can stabilize it. It's nothing long-term, but other than the counseling is as long as they need it there. So it's a temporary fix to come in to keep those people from being evicted and thrown into the street to probably a higher rent unit than they exist in.
Thank you very much. That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Lamb.
Thank you, Mayor. Real quick, this is a great program. These are all great services, and I'm excited that we're able to help them out. Can you just follow up real quick? How are we, or how do you, I guess, how do you follow up with these applicants to make sure that their money's spent correctly? Is that, is that part of the process to say, you know, hey, I gave you ten thousand. What'd you do with it?
Oh, absolutely. Good question. And I should have mentioned this earlier, but, you know, I'll bring it up now. Every agency that we do fund, every, every dollar that we do spend, we do track. If we provide funding to an agency, we just pick one, Family Support Center, located in Midvale. Every dollar they spend is spent on West Jordan residents. They're required to document it, keep a record on it. And then we'll go out and do a site visit every year to visit the agencies, review the files, make sure all the funds are spent on West Jordan residents. And then they do quarterly reporting and annual reporting to us also, based on income, family size, and ages of the children, you know. So every agency, we do track. Every dollar we do spend are basically on West Jordan residents. The only one that you never know for sure is the Road Home. And the Road Home reporting there is where was your last home, or where did you sleep last night? And that's the only way they can really track the homeless. But, yeah, we do track it, make sure every dollar goes to West Jordan residents.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Whitlock.
I just wanted to thank Chuck for his service, as well as the other committee members, especially the community members that came in. I felt like it was a great opportunity to hear from each of these. And in line with you, Chad, most of them brought in the percentage of residents of West Jordan that they served from their overall, we served X amount overall, and this portion was from West Jordan. And sadly, a lot of times, we, we're getting more for our citizens than what we're giving to those organizations, which is good, bad, right? Like, when we're using the crisis nursery, a lot sad, but good it's there. If no one else has anything, I'd be willing
We need to have a public hearing.
To have a public hearing for you, Mayor.
Thank you, Chuck.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Let me just say one quick thing. I'll promise, shut up. One thing these agencies do, we do have an excellent group of nonprofits in Utah. Whether they apply this year, we've had some good ones in the past, and great ones. Every dollar they do spend, probably the worst case, if we give them a dollar, the worst case, we probably get five dollars back in return. Some of these agencies actually return in service to us somewhere between twenty to fifty dollars for every dollar we give them for our West Jordan residents. So we're getting a lot of bang for our buck. And the council, I just want to make sure you know that. I know if you've been on the committee, you understand it, you've heard it. But they are, even with the extreme costs now, we're probably getting a bigger return on our money than we have in the past. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I will now open my public hearing on this issue. Anyone that would like to address council regarding this issue, please come to the microphone.
Thank you. I'm Peggy Daniel from South Valley Services, or South Valley Sanctuary is our crisis shelter. And I just want to thank you so much for the support that you have given to us with the city attorney, to the police department. We work hand in hand with West Jordan in a lot of things that we do. Just one of, you were asking return on your money. I was, didn't quite get to figure out what the percentage is, but we approximately the cost for the two hundred and seventy-five residents that we served was one hundred and forty thousand, six hundred and thirty-three dollars. So the fourteen thousand, three hundred and five, I'm not quite sure what that return is, but it's substantial on the money that you're investing in what we do. I just wanted to bring, wanted to thank Chuck too, because his process is really great. We love coming and talking with the people that are on that committee and sharing with them, and which is more than, you know, what you can get in the three-minute time. But a couple of the programs that I'd just like to highlight that you might not know of, we were, last fiscal year, we turned away two hundred and three people that we could not serve in our shelter. That meant that they either were, stayed homeless, or went to the Road Home, or just could not put them in a domestic violence shelter at all. So we just got some funding that we started in January, which allows us to now have a no-turnaway policy. So if they call and they're in crisis, we can put them in a hotel and for a day or two until we can help them find housing so that they're not out on the streets. So that is one great thing that we have been able to do. And we also just got funding to help pay rent and utility assistance for domestic violence survivors that are homeless. And just so you know that they're all homeless, and once they leave their place of, of residents, they are now homeless. And we are able to help them just for a, we have so far helped thirty-seven West Jordan residents with some type of rental utilities or some kind of assistance to keep them in their homes so they didn't, or find a new location so they're not homeless, just since we started that in October. So, so we're, we're out there. We know that finding safe, affordable housing for these survivors is a necessity. We can't have them all come to our shelter. And we've had to, about sixty percent of those women in the Road Home are there due to domestic violence. So thank you for funding the other programs that help all of our survivors, because without all of the community support, we could not do the best that we can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Ryan Johnson. I'm a citizen. I'm a resident here in West Jordan. First all, I appreciate you all being here and out of your busy lives to put forth this effort. And I wouldn't want to be in your shoes and have to decide of which program's the fun. That's a very hard job. I do have some concerns, obviously. I mean, when you look at these things and you see these cuts, I mean, we're talking, you know, like the lady before me said, South Valley, it looks like they, they deal with case management and domestic violence. You have the Road Home that's getting cut. You have ADA programs, which are ramps for disabled people we're cutting. I see administrative, and I believe administrative work is important, but we've got, I mean, one hundred and fifteen grants to administrative with no cuts. There's also emergency home repair for a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. I understand it's important to have a home, but if people aren't getting services or health care that they need, they're not going to need a home. You know, and the last thing I would just like to say is, this is a budget for two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. I noticed on that clip from the Boys and Girls Home that they were mentioning something about seniors having to do a spend-down, which I understand is very hard for seniors. But I believe the legislature, and what I've heard from other speaks with representatives that are currently in the legislature, that they are going to try to adjust that gap of the spend-down. So that might be something that you can look at changing in the future if the state legislature does do something. And I will be pushing hard for that as well as a West Jordan citizen, so people in that gap coverage get covered. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Oh, my gosh, he's tall. Hi, David. I'm Alison Leishman, and I'm the Development Director with the In-Between. And I want to thank you for your consideration for giving us some money for our program. This year, our program becomes even more crucial with our diversified shelter model. We have currently twelve hundred home, people being housed at the Road Home. When the Road Home closes, and with the three new shelters, we'll have availability for seven hundred homeless individuals and no medical rest but beds. So we become even more crucial in this model. And since we've opened, we have been able to help sixty-two people experience the end of life with dignity, surrounded by people who love them, warm and comfortable. We have provided fourteen thousand medical bed housing days. And in the last year and a half, we have served nineteen residents of West Jordan. So I thank you very much for your consideration in helping us make sure that no one is left alone on the street in times of terminal and critical illness in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council on this issue? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and go to the council for further discussion and a motion. Councilmember Burton?
Thank you, Mayor. I have another question for Chuck, if I may.
Sure.
From one of the comments there about the administrative fees.
Right.
Have those administrative fees changed over the years?
You know, they've probably gone up one, one to three thousand dollars per year. HUDs is the maximum allocation that we can set. These go for not only salaries, training, travel, but it also goes for software that we utilize in the program for tracking and management. It also goes for any related experience, expense that we have in it. Probably in the last ten years, they've probably gone up about ten thousand dollars is roughly. We can allow up to twenty percent of the program entitlement budget to administration. And we're at about nineteen thousand, nineteen percent this year. That's what we're looking at.
And if that were reduced, what would we lose?
If that amount was actually reduced, the city would have to look at picking up the reduction to cover the expenses for the position. Right now, this basically covers eighty percent of the cost for my position. City provides twenty percent of salary on mine, so that I can do projects like the Big Ben Habitat Area, Jordan River Trail. That way, I get to work outside of the HUD program in addition there.
So presently, the city subsidizes that already?
About twenty percent on the salary side, yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember.
Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor. Quick question, probably for you, Chuck. It might be for Denise, but I think you might have this more at the tip of your tongue. Do we know how much the city spent on down payment assistance grants in the current fiscal year?
Probably only around fifteen thousand dollars, fifteen, sixteen thousand, somewhere in that range.
Okay. We're budgeting five plus the fifty carryover, so... Does that $50,000 carryover have to be, have to stay in that line item as far as that $50,000 carryover go toward more down payment grants? Or can that go to, say, the road home or some other program?
Um, you know, it cannot go to a public service agency because we're capped at 15% of our annual allocation. And we, we cap that out at the, um, at the number right here. Well, uh, turn it off.
You broke the internet.
There we go. So, 15% of our allocations, uh, 85, 631. Uh, so we've spent every penny that we can towards public service agencies, and we can increase that. The other option we could look at at the 50,000 is to look at maybe ADA ramps, emergency home repairs, stuff like that. Uh, we probably have a little extra money in that account that we're gonna be rebudgeting to other activities. That's why we only asked for a, um, carryover of 50,000. Projection is, based on James Woods, some of his reports, um, at the state level, some of the housing reports coming out is the market's gonna flatten or stabilize towards the end of this coming year, whether that happens or not. But the challenge there is, and also the other factor is, a lot of the lenders are going back, getting very creative on how to fund these houses nowadays. So, it's opening the door a little bit more for your low to moderate income persons to come in and purchase a home. Um, so we, we didn't want to just totally cut it down to like 10, 15,000 based on this past year's, um, activity in case the market does come back and all. I mean, right now, one person low to moderate income is basically 44, 45,000. They cannot go out and purchase 350, 380,000 dollar home. And unless they have an higher income, they don't qualify for our program. You know, so that's, that's kind of the long, long version to what should have been a short answer.
Sure, can we go to the next slide real quick too? I just want to check to see where else we have made cuts to the other, so ADA ramps, we made cuts, home air assistance, we made cuts. And administration, there's a small cut. Okay, so what I wanted to just clarify, my purpose for my question was that, um, I was wondering if we could take some of these administrative funds and distribute them to the other agencies and things like the gentleman mentioned, uh, in the public hearing?
Uh, we can.
But we really can't because we're capped.
To the, to the public services agency, no, we can't. The only other agency out there we could get more money to would be on the assist program for emergency home repairs. And we actually gave them a $25,000 increase this year.
Right, okay, that's what I needed to know, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Councilmember.
Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, uh, one more question, Chuck, for me.
Yes, no problem, I like questions.
And, and on the administrative, I mean, there, there are some processes. So, uh, with CDBG, they, there's contracts formed with the, the different clients so that they adhere to what their proposal was. And there's, uh, uh, there's follow-up, like at the end of the year, you know, did you meet the request and the funding, those type of things, right? So, I mean, the administrative cost deals with a lot of aspects of monitoring and ensuring the CDBG funds are, are spent in compliance with the law.
Uh, correct, yes.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
All right. Councilmember Whitelock.
How about a motion now, Mayor?
Sounds good.
Okay, I move that we approve ordinance, night, it'll get on the right one. Resolution 19 dash 78 regarding recommendations for the West Jordan CDBG Home Committee Funding.
Councilmember McConaughey, second. We have a motion by Councilmember Whitelock, a second by Councilmember McConaughey, discussion to the motion. Seeing none, let's vote.
Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
Mayor Writing.
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob.
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Aye.
Councilmember Whitelock.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb.
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson. Vote passes seven in favor.
I'm going to suspend the rules for just a moment. We have somebody that came in late that would like to take some time with our, uh, during citizen comments. And so, we invite, uh, Bart Barker to come to the microphone.
Mayor, two, two points of order, one point of order and one suggestion. Point of order is, we'd have to vote on suspending the rules. But number two, why don't we have, if Bart's got some time on his hands, I would, I would suggest suspending the rules when we have this item come up on the agenda. And then we can open it up for anybody who wants to speak to the item. Because I would really like to get as much input as anybody who would want to speak on that. Granted, there was a citizen comment period, but if, if we, you know, if we're gonna open it back up, let's open it back up. And let whoever wants to speak on that item, speak on that item when it's up on the agenda. That's just my suggestion.
So, if we suspend the rules to allow to open back up citizen comments, any objections to that? Chris?
No objection, but I, I do like what Councilmember Jacob said because we could have other folks who are also here for these other three public hearings. And then, once we're done with the public hearings, we just have the consent and then we're at the workshop. So, we could suspend the rules and return to workshop form and allow anybody who wishes to speak at that, uh, on, yeah. I, I like that flow.
He would be allowed three minutes. So... Okay, we did not get approval to suspend the rules. So, we move to public hearing. Item 5B, receive public input and consider for approval, ordinance 19 dash 17. Amending the 2009 West Jordan Municipal Code Title 13, Zoning Regulations. Chapter 2, Definitions Adding Definitions of Residential Density. Citywide applicability, Larry Gardner.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, this is a result, this is a housekeeping item, but it's a result of the senior apartment project that came before the council and the development plan, uh, earlier in the year. And some of the density being allocated from a little parcel, uh, across the street and not in the whole project. We're not really in the project area, but we didn't have any way at that time to really define it. And so, these two definitions, uh, gross density is basically the total number of units divided by the total acreage of a project. That's, uh, really mostly used in Euclidean zoning. And then, net density is just the developable area. So, you exclude roads, parks, trails, all of that stuff. And then you, the net density is just a result of the developable land. Uh, in the WSP, our west side planning area, uh, that is how density is calculated. All other zones, it's calculated by gross. And so, this really does put us in a more of defensible, uh, position if we ever get challenged on it. Do you have any questions?
Councilmember Jacob.
Uh, one question, we're adding these definitions to the code. When I look at this, all we're changing in the code on this is the definitions. But where in the code does it refer to density where it needs to now specify whether it's referring to gross density or net density?
It's spen- it's specified in the WSPA, it's net density. And then, in the very beginning of the definitions, everything else is gross, calculated by gross.
Yeah, I don't see that in the legislative draft that was proposed here. It just defines the two terms, it doesn't say where they apply specifically and where they don't apply specifically. So, I'm just, I'm concerned about that we're only accomplishing half the battle here. You also have to change where it refers to that.
I can go, I can put something in the definition, definitions that will, uh, make that more specific if you, if you would like.
It's, it's not the definitions that need to be more specific. It's, it's where else in the code that it says, you know, medium density zones are five to seven.
The appropriate place to do that would be to define it in the definitions where this applies.
Right, so, so for example, in a medium density zone, it would say, you know, it's five to seven units per acre, or whatever the number is that I have in front of me. Um, something like that. Five to nine units per acre, is that net density or is that gross density?
Gross density.
Okay, but is that specified where it says medium density zones?
Um, I would fall back as zoning administrator. If it's not specified as net density, I would always use gross density.
Scott wants to answer a question.
Yeah, Larry, uh, to, to, I think Larry's, uh, right on track. Um, I, I, I get it, every time you, you do a text amendment, you gotta look for the domino effect. And everywhere that the code has an exception to this definition, it, it'll spell it out. And the only other place is the WSPA, which really isn't used other than a s- a very small area. Everywhere else in the code that mentions the word density would refer automatically back to this clarification, this gross. So, it's, our bases are covered.
Right, um...
And Councilman Jake, this is from last night's workshop. The council, planning commission, want to explore a foreign base code. Net density would be the driving density calculation in that case.
Yeah, I was just, I was just going to opine then legislatively speaking, that I would prefer to see net density be used as a calculation almost exclusively and not gross density for the most part legislatively speaking. So, that's just my two cents, which is why I was really concerned about where in the code it refers to the one or the other. So, I appreciate the, the clarification, but I don't know that I love it. Thank you.
Councilmember Burton.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you tell me what Euclidean zoning is?
Euclidean zoning, uh, is a result of the case, the city of Euclid, or Euclid, Ohio versus city of Ambler. It was a Supreme Court case that really established, uh, zoning in the United States as a regulatory tool, gave it its, uh, teeth. Um, and so, what the city of Euclid at that time was doing was dividing areas up in zones based on square footage of lots. A developer challenged them and said, this, uh, this is not legal. You can't make me, you can't limit how I, uh, do things by the square footage of lots. Uh, the Supreme Court disagreed. And therefore, Euclidean zoning is basically lot zoning. What you do is you establish a minimum square footage for each lot, for each zone, and that's what, that's what we mean by Euclidean zoning.
Thank you. Seeing no more questions, I will open the public hearing for this issue. Those in the audience wishing to address this issue, please come to the microphone. Seeing none, I will close public hearing and come back to the council for discussion and a possible motion. Councilmember Burton.
I move to adopt ordinance 19 dash 17.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Burton, a second by Councilmember McConaughey, and discussion to the motion. Councilmember Anderson.
I, I just want clarification. I thought I, I heard seven, or 1918, or did you say 1917? Maybe I just missed, okay, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Whitelock.
So, I do want to echo Councilmember Jacob's sentiments. I, I prefer net, so I'm glad that that was the discussion last night, and I hope we move there.
Let's vote.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob.
No.
Mayor Writing.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb.
Yes.
Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
Councilmember Whitelock.
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Aye.
Vote passes six to one in favor.
Public hearing, item 5C, receive public input and consider for approval, ordinance 19 dash 18. Amending the 2009 West Jordan Municipal Code Title 13, Zoning Regulations. Chapter 5A and 5F, establishing, establishment of zones, adding cannabis processing facilities as a conditional use in the M dash 2, major manufacturing, and A dash 20, agricultural 20 acre minimum lot zone. Citywide applicability, Larry.
This, um, ordinance is a result of the compromise bill that the legislature, uh, passed in January as a result of the referent, was it referendum, what's that called? The what? Referendum that, on medical marijuana that the voters passed. And so, this is, uh, this was born because of that, um, substitute bill. Uh, cannabis processing facilities will be administered by the Department of Agriculture. And in the statute, it requires under local control that if a city or a municipality or county have an agricultural zone, then a cannabis processing facility, uh, must be permitted in one of those, uh, in one of the agricultural zones of the city. Uh, the planning commission felt that the A 20 zone would be more appropriate, uh, in West Jordan rather than an A 1 or A 5 zone. Uh, those zones typically are, are typically are closer to residential areas than the A 20 is. Uh, and then, the statute also requires that if municipality or county has a industrial area, that it be a permitted use in a, in one of the, the industrial zones. And we have three in West Jordan, the MP, M1 and M2. The planning commission felt that the M2 is the appropriate zone to establish a cannabis processing facility. Um, the planning commission, uh, forwarded a positive recommendation. This is a requirement of statute, uh, so for the city to be in compliance with the statute, uh, this must be approved. Do you have any questions for me about this or concerns or that I may be able to answer?
Councilmember Burton. This may or may not be the right time to bring this up, so you correct me if there's a better spot for it. But on some of the discussions I've have heard is security on this. Do we require security for them?
The, the statute already requires security. The, the, you know, there's a whole, a section in the statute that requires it to be a secured lockdown. It's video recorded at all times. Uh, everyone in and out has to sign in and out, so it's a very secure facility.
And security, is that provided by the municipality or?
No, it's provided by the, uh, license holder, and it's inspected by the Department of Agriculture.
Thank you.
Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor. I didn't see the definition from state code of what a cannabis, cannabis production establishment, what that is. Well, how is that defined in, in the state code? Do you have that handy?
Cannabis production establishment means a cannabis cultivation facility, a cannabis processing facility, or an independent cannabis testing laboratory.
Okay, so there's not a whole lot of requirements based around how big it is or how small it is?
Yes, there is a lot of requirements. If it's an indoor grow facility, it cannot exceed 100,000 square feet. If it's an outdoor grow facility, it cannot exceed four acres. It must be blocked from the view at ground level, so it has to be behind a fence or be in a building, so. And it, the plants can't be stocked. They can't, it can't be, you know, the Hanging Gardens of Babylon type grow facility, so.
Or on multiple shelves, is what you're saying. Okay, um, and there's a limit, I think in state code as well, about how many of these are gonna be allowed in the whole state?
There's 10 in the state of Utah. The Department of Agriculture has the, uh, ability to go up to 15 on a recommendation from the Department of Health if there's an overwhelming need for this type of product for medical services. Now, this isn't recreational, it's just for medical purposes only.
And is, is there a, uh, a spacing requirement on those 10? Like how far apart they have to be or anything like that, like we do with?
The proximity requirements are only from schools or po- or, uh, community areas, which is 1,000 feet, or residential areas, which is 600 feet. Uh, there's generally, the state will only allow one per municipality. If there's a license that comes in for a second facility, the state will contact the municipality and find out if they're okay with having two production facilities in, in their municipality.
Okay, all right, thank you. I may have a, a question after the public hearing, so stay, stay close.
And, and a point I didn't make is, the planning commission recommends that they be, these both be conditional uses in the A 20 and the M 2 zone, which gives the planning commission, uh, further authority, uh, to, uh, put conditions on that will mitigate any negative impacts to the area. Uh, one of the concerns by the pl-... Uh, one of the concerns by the planning commission was odor. And a four acre pot grow or cannabis grow can be very odoriferous. Uh, and so there would need to be some way to, uh, control that. And so that's just one of the conditions that could be placed upon it. And so, thank you.
Councilmember Lamb has a question.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, you actually just answered my question. I was asking about the odor because apparently we approach daily about odor in this city. And so I'm not sure if this odor is bad or not.
If you go from rotten egg odor now to skunk, yes.
Well, even if it makes you happy compared to what people, some people use it for.
The odor will not.
The odor is still going to be out there and people are going to complain.
The odor will not make you happy.
Okay. Well, the odor out in the west doesn't make people happy right now either, so, um, I'm just, I'm just trying to think ahead when there'll be more. But the last question is, has any city been approached yet for the, these processing plants or cities?
No, no, because the statute doesn't take effect until July.
Okay. I'm just wondering if West Jordan is a, you know, city they're looking at.
I've had one person approach me and that was in January.
You say one person, was it someone that's just thinking about it or?
No, he was representing a conglomerate of people who do this in other states.
So we're, we're on the radar then. We, we could be a potential site.
And, you know, and I'm not going to say he's going to end up in West Jordan. And I imagine he probably talked to every municipality he could that has these type of zones, so.
Okay, thank you.
With that, I'll open up public hearing on this issue. Anyone wishing to speak to city council regarding this resolution, please come to the microphone.
Hello, council members. My name is Taylor Roth, West Jordan resident and citizen, phone number eight zero one nine two eight three nine four one. Um, my comments are not necessarily specific to this, but I did want to address this. This is my first council meeting. And I have had some difficulty hearing some of the council members on the issues, so I simply wanted to speak to that. And, uh, also as it, there's a bit of a duration to these, uh, meetings, it seems like. So I wasn't sure what the protocol is for restroom breaks and such, so. I would appreciate clarification as a citizen so that I can maintain as much order and decorum as possible to the proceedings. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address this issue? Seeing that, I will close the public hearing and come back to council for further discussion and/or motion. Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, first off, I know typically we don't respond during the public hearing. We, we're here primarily to listen. But based on Mr. Ross's comments, I thought I'd share my intention that after we're done with the public hearings, but before we do the workshop, I plan to move for a short recess before that workshop convenes. And then I was ready to ask for advice on making a motion, but if there's comments first, I can hold off on that.
So Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor. I think the, uh, the question before us, and I'll try and speak more loudly. As I imagine it was, I was one of those that's hard to hear because I just have that kind of voice. The, the question before us is, do we want one of these or not in our city? Um, at least, at least in part. It's not the total question, but it is how we go about this and how we move forward with this. That plays into it. It looks like the planning commission recommendation is to make it as hard as possible while still making it legal. Only in the largest agricultural zone parcels and only in the largest manufacturing zone parcels, and then only under conditional use. I really like the conditional use part. I think that part is spot on. But I'm wondering if we want to make this hard or if we want to, or if this is a type of business we would welcome. Now, with any other drug, we would call this a pharmaceutical facility. And we welcome pharmaceutical manufacturers into our city with open arms and, and we give them big hugs and kisses. This, by virtue of, of this drugs, marijuana and cannabis's past and its history and the, the history of abuses and, and the, the stigmas and the, uh, the stereotypes that go along with it are a lot of the hurdles that, that had to be overcome to get this even passed in, in our state and in many other states. So the question that I, that I'm posing to the council and opening for discussion is, do we, do we want to participate in this or not? Uh, maybe what are the tax implications for the city? Do, I mean, would it be a good thing to bring this in? How many jobs would it bring in, if any? Um, I imagine there'd be at least a gardener or two, uh, if not a odor control technician or some, some other, you know, some other positions. So that's just kind of where I am. I wouldn't mind seeing this as a pharmaceutical company, which, I mean, it's a medicine. That's why this legislature approved it. It's being used only as a medicine and not recreationally and, and all of that kinds of things. You still can't smoke it. I wouldn't mind seeing this conditional in all manufacturing and all agricultural zones. Because the conditional use allows the city to set those mitigating parameters in whenever it comes up. So that's my two cents and, uh, it's all it's worth.
Councilmember Burton.
Thank you, Mayor. I think we don't have a choice in state law. Proved as we don't, can't arbitrarily not, but my thought is, some of my thoughts are. We had discussed this at a Association of Municipal Councils meeting. And we had some people who had gone to California and to Denver and came back with some information. And they said that they were surprised on how rapidly their agriculture places got used for this and their warehouses. And they said the people who own the warehouses were really happy to rent to them because they paid top dollar and they paid in cash. And they were very pleased about that. And I think this wouldn't be bad. However, I don't want, and this they said were the problems they didn't foresee is it pushed out some other businesses that've been in their city for a long time. Some of the mall polish shops because they couldn't afford to pay the higher numbers. And so the warehouses were all booked up and gone. And so I'm thinking, and I don't know what the right number would be, perhaps we should put a percentage on there that they can go up to. I don't know if it's ten percent, twenty percent, thirty percent, so that we can keep existing businesses there and preserve those who have been in the city for years and paying their taxes and supporting us. And then still continue to let the new businesses come in and let them have some foothold there. That's a couple of thoughts that I have. I don't have the answer to that.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, similar to Councilmember Burton, the question, Councilmember Jacob is right, there are a couple of aspects to it. But the primary question I'm looking to answer is how can we be compliant with state, with state law? And I'm okay with this being restrictive to start with. It's always, do the microphones just die?
Yes.
Okay, there. I'm back, right? So, um, the question I'm trying to answer is how can we be compliant with state law? I'm not so worried about the ease of use for, for, for those who are going to be trying to participate in this, in this market. Because I worry that you can always make things less restrictive, but it's a lot harder to make things more restrictive. Where this is brand new, it's not something that we've seen in Utah. I want to be as careful as we possibly can with this, so I'm happy to meet the requirements, uh, the state legislature has set. I like the idea of making this conditional. I like everything that's here with, with adding the conditional use to it. But that would give staff some time to investigate and study and see, do we need to look, is it something that we should open up to all manufacturing zones? Or is it something that should be restricted based on other criteria? I, I don't want to start wide open and then wait to run into problems to restrict it. I'd rather start off restrictive with something new, take baby steps and then figure out how we can open it up later. I'd be ready for a motion, but there's a couple others, so I'll yield the floor. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Whitelock.
So I, I too would prefer that we start out slowly in baby steps. Um, for one reason is it's still against the federal government. And when we took these positions, we raised our hand and said we'd uphold the constitution and follow the rules. And so that, that concerns me a little bit, the way our state's going. I wish our federal government would change. Because I think change is needed in that area. I'm not sure that I agree that it's a pharmaceutical, when I, I don't think of growing medications so much. So I, I would like us to take baby steps to ensure that we get it right and to get what our community really wants. And I don't think we really know what our community wants, so I too am in favor of the conditional use.
Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. And I, I echo Councilmember McConaughey and Councilmember Whitelock. But I, but I do have a question because this is, this is front of mind. And maybe this is best for Mr. Wall, um, hopefully, uh, kind of, or Mr. Bricky. So in District Four, we already have a business, unknown business, I'm going to say, that, that creates an odor. And so does, does, how does this work? I mean, you have, you have groups that do mink farms, you have now cannabis growing. You now have, um, different industrial uses. And as residents encroach into these areas, then we get, um, complaints about, you know, hey, I've moved into this industrial area and I, I get my, my olfactory is in overdrive. And so I'm just wondering, just, just, how, how do we manage that with this by complying with state law?
It's an interesting question because, because of the state interference or the state preemption, whatever you like to call it. The only discretion the city has is in locating within the two types of zones. If there is a complaint, it's completely governed by the Department of Agriculture. Any enforcement, any investigation is out of the city's hands. So from a practical perspective, um, although the rules are not all completely formulated, you can get on the website and there are some papers that have been put together. Uh, but the enforcement would be to call them, uh, register the complaint and then they come out and deal with it. The issue of it being a permitted use, a conditional use or administrative use really doesn't have the same connotation it does in regular land use planning because a conditional use under LUDMA is a use where if you can determine that there are reasonably identifiable detrimental effects and those can be reasonably mitigated, then you can impose conditions to do that. In this case, there is not that latitude, although LUDMA defines a conditional use as it does, this statute would preclude any of that.
But, but we could, um, if, if housing or residential were to encroach into an industrial area regardless of the use, um, in this case, it would be a cannabis facility.
Right.
Would it be possible that, um, the city could require a document that's signed at closing that, that residents that are buying homes in that area recognize that they are purchasing a home in a known industrial area?
Yes. In fact, if you, yeah, there's a number of issues that over the years have been addressed to some extent by placing warnings on plaits, requiring warnings on building permits. Uh, yeah, we can put that on the plaque.
Is that something that has to be done?
It's nothing that later we could do anything about relative to enforcement, but it could be placed there.
All right, just so that there's a knowledge that I'm, I'm buying my house next to a milk producing facility.
Sure.
A potato chip facility, uh, just a steel melting facility. Just all these things that can create odors as residents encroach on, in industrial space. And maybe that's a, a better solution, but is that something that would go into, that we'd have to define in code or is that, how, how does, how does development services know that you're within a thousand feet of an industrial space? That you need to have this extra document at closing or how, how does that happen?
It would be something that you as a council legislatively would, uh, enable. We do that through an ordinance and amend the, the land use code.
Okay, thank you very much. That's all I have, Mayor.
Councilmember Lamb.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to respond to Councilmember Jacob's thought about, do we want this kind of thing in West Jordan? And I, I think for me, the answer is, I don't know. It's, it's a yes, it's a no. We don't really know much about it and how much tax base of life should bring to the city. Um, but I do agree with Chris that, you know, this is the minimum we're doing here and I don't think we're making it hard. I just think we're setting a precedence right now. As I pointed out last night in our planning commission meeting, we can always change things and we do. So I, I think this is a good way to start right now. Agricultural zones make sense. I don't want this in my backyard on the east side of West Jordan. So I know that by doing this, it won't be, um, but these agriculture areas, twenty acre minimum, this is perfect. And I think this is the way we need to go to, to make sure that we just start out with baby steps. And, uh, then if, once the, once the process starts to grow and we see that maybe it would benefit the citizens or benefit West Jordan, then we go from there. So, thanks.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, seeing no other comments, I would like to make a motion. And I would look to staff for help for the verbiage on this one because I know I want to, um, approve, uh, move to adopt ordinance nineteen dash eighteen, but I also want to include the conditional conditions requested by the planning commission. So what would be the best way to make that motion? And second part, could you word it in such a way that I could say?
If you pass the ordinance as it is, it's a conditional use in both of those zones.
Okay, so no, no special verbiage?
There's no, there's no specific conditions with this ordinance. That would be, uh, as Mr. Wall said, would be, uh, to be determined what detrimental impacts are.
Chris, under the staff recommendations under the, uh, council action, it states that, uh, the cannabis production establishments as a conditional use.
Yeah, and I, I noted that, but Mr. Gardner, when he, when he specifically called out that the planning commission had recommended that. I wanted to be very clear that I wanted to make sure that that was in there, so I wasn't sure if that was part of the recommendation in the end, but it wasn't part of the ordinance. So that, that's why the question for clarification.
Put that language in your motion then?
It sounds like it's not needed, so I will just move to approve ordinance nineteen dash eighteen.
Councilmember Lamb.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember McConaughey, a second by Councilmember Lamb. Discussion of the motion. Councilmember Burton.
Thank you, Mayor. I suppose no one want to talk about my percentage thing, so on that note, I will be in support of the motion.
Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm a little bit torn on which way I'm going to vote, um, because I, I do want to take the step. I do want to take the first step, but I think, and maybe it's because I used to work for the organization that was behind Prop Two. So that, that could be part of it, but, um, I just, I, I would like to see us take a larger step than just a, a baby step. That's just my opinion, so. And maybe it's just because I'm more familiar with the issue because of where I, where I used to work.
Okay, let's vote.
Councilmember Whitelock.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Burton.
Okay.
He's voted seven in favor.
Public hearing item five D, receive public input and consider approving the preliminary development plan for Brinkerhoff Bluffs for property located at seventy six fifty three South, thirteen hundred West in the PRD M S H O zoning district, Cannon and Cannon, Gary Cannon applicant, Larry Gardner.
Mayor and council, this, uh, preliminary development plan has been considered by the designer review committee and the planning commission. Here's the, uh, location. It's off of thirteen hundred West, uh, north of seventy eight hundred South, by the sewage treatment plant and close to Gardner Village. As I mentioned, it's received recommendation from the planning commission and the designer review committee recently. They're proposing having one point nine four acres of open space, that's excluding slopes thirty percent or greater. The open space will be on the north side in this area right here. And then also a, a trail or pathway connecting to the Colosseum's apartments down here in the south east quarter. The proposal is to have twenty three single family homes with fourteen senior housing units. In the current zoning of the planned residential development, medium density, uh, a density of three 3.1 to 5.5 dwelling units per acre is allowed. There's a minimum requirement of 15% open space. The application has 22% open space, so as the ordinance reads for every 1% additional open space, the application can receive .25 additional dwelling units per acre. So under this current zone, they have allowable density of 4.85 units per acre, which falls in between 3.1 and 5.5. Here's a rendering of kind of the, what they're planning with the open space, they're to improve this area down here by the canal with a detention basin, and also improve this area up along 1300 West where there'd be a, a park that's open to the public, they're specifically looking for a dog park. And then there's a natural drainage or stream that run down through to this detention bond. They're proposing to build an asphalt trail that would connect the detention bond up here to the dog park, and to leave or improve this area in natural vegetation. And then again, they'd have a connection to Colosseum's and also Gardner Village with a 10-foot trail down here in the southeast corner. And here is a rendering of their proposed senior attached homes and senior, excuse me, and single-family homes. The ordinance calls for forced-sided architecture to be displayed in the senior housing, and this is what they have displayed for their forced-sided architecture. So with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have at this time.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. Could you go back a couple slides to the one that, that one? Yeah. So I'm, I'm curious how close we are to the entrance to the, the apartments on 13th West, how close we are to the entrance on there. On, on that south entrance, is that a driveway or is that a full entrance?
This will be emergency access, fire lane, so it won't be a full access only in the event of a emergency or fire. And the, the access to Colosseum's is right here on the southern border or boundary of the development.
Okay. I, I like seeing the entrance as far north as possible. One of my concerns was if traffic is backed up, you've got folks waiting to turn left into the, the apartment complex, potentially causing problems for folks trying to get out of this complex, so that, that was what I was looking to see. Thank you.
Councilmember Burton.
Thank you, Mayor. Do you know what these will, how much they will sell for? Are they considered affordable housing?
The, the applicant, Gary Cannon, is here, he might be able to better address that question.
Oh, that'd be great.
Is this my formal time to speak, or do you want me to hold off on that for a moment? We're, we're anticipating the attached housing, I, I have no control over what retail prices will be, but we are guests, I don't, I don't know how to, I don't know the definition of affordable anymore. But comparable product to this with these square footages selling in the high 300s to mid 400s, so I don't know what affordable is for a, for an active senior community. I know that most of them finished their basements, they aren't really keying on as much the affordable side of it as creating security and maintenance for living on one floor. These all have walkout basements as well, so it's probably, doesn't meet the definition of affordable. I don't know if you can hit affordable right now at this location. I think you gotta go way far west to get property cheaper to do that, so.
So on the senior homes, they have basements?
That is correct.
Okay, but they're unfinished?
Well, they can finish them if they want, and they're, they're all walkouts. The ones abrupting the conservancy property, I, I try to not use the word sewer, especially after that last round we just went through, but yes, they, they all have walkouts.
Okay. Another question I have is, besides calling these senior housing, what makes this development senior housing?
Well, it's not. It, only the, it has to be the, the area that we have called out for, call it an empty nester community or active senior living is for 55 or older, and I believe the requirement is 75% of those residents will need to be 55 or older. Is that correct, Larry? Is, is the requirement in a 55 or older community, 55, uh, 75% of the residents need to be 55 or older? Yes.
Are there any specific amenities for seniors in this development?
I've got the, the, golly, I'm... Is it, is this my opportunity to do my presentation, or, because I, I got it all worked up to talk to you about it, or do you, I can give you all those?
That may cite me a lot of questions too, what do you say, Mayor?
I didn't know if Ken, out of respect to Ken, I don't know if he was...
Let's go through these questions, and then when we open a public hearing, we'll ask you, we'll invite you to come up and, and do your presentation at that time.
Okay, so you want me to answer that?
So I'll hold off, because that's probably included in that, and I'll just ask it afterwards.
Okay, thank you.
So after the public hearing, though.
Councilmember Lamb.
Thank you, Mayor. I think my only concern, and we, I don't know if this is a concern that we have or not, because we're just basically approving this subdivision, but the homes along the canal and the homes along the gully there, is this, has a soil study been done yet to make sure that's safe to put houses that won't sink, or is the soil study done afterwards?
To my understanding, the soil study has been completed.
Okay, and you can answer that when we need it to. Okay, that's all I wanted to know, thank you.
Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I can't remember who, who asked about the roads, but has, has the traffic engineer looked at that north ingress egress and its impact to the traffic on 13th as, as cars are coming out of the apartment complex and getting up to 78 South, that that doesn't become a impassable, that, that the only option those folks have is to turn north?
Yes, our traffic engineer has looked at the impacts of additional traffic onto 1300 West, and he feels comfortable in recommending this layout.
Okay, glad it's on the record. That's all I have, thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. Responding to a question as to what is affordable housing, this comes from the State of Utah's Affordable Housing Report, just two paragraphs to read, it's kind of interesting. Affordability is a ratio of households' housing costs compared to its income. The U.S. federal government defines affordable housing as any housing unit whose gross monthly cost, including utilities, are equal to no more than 30% of a household's gross monthly income. In general, a housing unit is considered affordable regardless of payment amount, type of unit, age of unit, size of unit, or location of the unit, if the unit's costs are under 30% of the occupying household's gross monthly income. This means that a newly built five-bedroom house in the suburbs with a $3,000 per month mortgage payment and utilities is affordable for a family earning $10,000 per month, and likewise, a studio apartment built in 1960 with a gross rent of $300 per month with utilities is affordable for a household earning only $1,000 per month. So affordability has been thrown around a lot lately, but it really comes back to, it's affordable depending on how much money you have. There's no good way to say that the city is a city we haven't had defined affordable housing for ourselves for these types of conversations, saying this is what we would define as the median income, so maybe that's something we want to do at some future point in time to help with the conversation, but when, when asked the definition, what exactly is affordable housing, 30% of, the rent should be no more than 30% of the income to meet the qualifications, so it all goes back to what your answer is, so, thank you, Mayor.
Seeing no more questions, I will open this up to public hearing at this time, and following the public hearing will allow the applicant to make his presentation. So is there anyone that would like to address counsel on this issue? Please come to the microphone. Seeing then, I will close the public hearing and invite the applicant to come to the microphone for his presentation.
Thank you for the invitation, your honorable mayor, respected council and administration. You're getting sick of seeing me, I know, because this has just been a, this is my third subdivision that I've assisted in, in, in the last three years, and, and every one, I get a little bit better at understanding the wants, needs of the, of the neighbors, the city. This is probably by far the one I'm the most proud of. I, I would like to add this before I get started in my presentation. If half of us quit, quit praying for moisture, we might be halfway there. So whoever keeps praying for moisture, just, let's just, let's just tone it down a little bit. I'm on three state water boards, and we've got plenty of water, but we still need to conserve, so. With that, tell you a little bit about where, how we've gotten to this. If you'll look, this is, this is, we're a little over a year into this now. We had two meetings with the neighborhood before we even presented this, and we're very proud of the fact that we like to involve the neighbors and get their input. As you can tell, we had nobody here screaming, you know? It falls back on our presentation and making this the very best product we can, and obviously has to work out economically for everybody, but it also has to be a product that we're all proud of, and you guys are, are safe to call that it is safe and it is an amenity to the city. A couple things that we have added, the, the park or the trail system into Colosseum's, we would have preferred to run it down on the canal. We felt like where we ended up pushing it through to the north boundary of the Colosseum apartments is still going to give access to Gardner Village, we, we consider that an amenity. We're within about less than a half mile from tracks. We have created a walking park that is in a circular motion that is an amenity. We, we started looking at the liability of adding RV parking to some of the senior housing, and you've heard this, a number of you've heard this statistic before, but I'm gonna give it to you again. 65, every day in the United States, 10,000 people are turning 65. 82% of their buying decision is made by their pet. Their pet. I know that's hard to believe, but that is a fact. We are severely in need of more senior housing. I can tell you that the builder that we've attracted, that, to come into here, he said that the average active senior spends between 50 and $100,000 on upgrades in their home. Most of them pay cash, most of them do reverse mortgage, some of them do reverse mortgages. So we have a, a dog park, we have a very nice water feature that we are going to definitely class up a little bit, but we're not removing it, we're not piping it, we're making it as part of the amenities. Plenty of open space, we've exceeded the requirements set down by the city. I have to commend the administration, we have worked back and forth on this to hit these numbers to a T. This hasn't been easy to do, but, and this is a tough, very, very difficult zoning, I don't know if a zoning, combining these two has been done in West Jordan, so it has, it has raised some challenges and complications that we have met or exceeded through this In answer to Dirk, Councilman Burton, what was your question again? I didn't want to forget about it, and I didn't write, I didn't write it down, and I apologize. Hopefully I hit it.
My question is, what amenities are specific for the seniors?
Oh, and I believe I touched on that, and we have exceeded the amenities that were laid out for this zoning, mainly the open space, the dog park, the walking trails, the water feature, the access to TOD as well as Gardner Village. I, I can't think, you know, there's a major, there's a 50-foot Rocky Mountain power easement running through the property, and we probably couldn't have laid it out any better to turn probably something that is viewed as a negative into a positive. Not saying it's amenity, because I, I'm not particularly fond of looking at a major power lineup, but we don't have a choice here, we just had to make the best with what we got, and that's why, probably one of the big reasons we have so much open space is we incorporated that into the open space.
Councilmember Whitlock has a question for you.
Great, thank you. Oh, I, I'm, I'm happy to conclude, I've said too much.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. When I look at, when I look at this map up there and I see the lines, they look like property lines to me, and so the ones that are nearest us on that map, it looks like their property goes beyond where you've got green, is that because of a slope behind their homes?
Is, is that the property line along the canal?
That's what I'm asking.
Specifically.
Are those their property lines?
Yes.
And, and so why do we have part of it green and part of it native vegetation? Is there a slope going on there?
Yes, there's a slope.
And so then my question for, probably more for staff is, we are very close to the Jordan River there, and we have, I know there are rules about that, so how do we ensure, like this guy in the corner house, if that's all my property and I can only use maybe a half of my property, how do we ensure they don't do something down in that area that might be harmful to the river?
That's a canal.
Okay, to the canal that goes into the river?
So this isn't the Jordan River, that's the North Jordan Canal.
Okay, that's the canal, so...
And so they will be able to fully utilize their property completely, there's no restrictions on it because of the canal. The canal company owns their property where the canal is on, but abiding property owners. And it's also good that it's on the upside of the canal rather than the downside of the canal, because flooding concerns if the bank was ruptured. I think the reason that it's kind of grayed or, or the photo rather than the, the green, I just think that that was a mistake in coloring, and I, that's the full property, so.
Okay, all right. My, my other one is, is more of a comment, probably than a question, but I sure wish that we could gravitate towards something other than native vegetation, like water wise plants when we put in these areas, because native vegetation often, often ends up being someone's weeds, so. Overall, I'm happy with the way that you...
Thank you.
...approached the neighbors to begin with. I, I, early on, heard about your development through one of those neighbors. And I'm not as concerned about, you know, what amenities are there for the seniors. I do like the fact that there's a mixed use here, so that if you, you know, want to have your parents near, there's a home for you and a home for them, and not together. I think that is a good idea. Could you show me on this map, you keep saying water feature, what, what is your water feature? What am I not seeing?
Let me, let me see if I can get back to, let me find. I think it's in, in the development plan.
So, so it's really just the natural water that runs through?
That is correct.
Okay.
It's, it's a natural stream that runs year-round. It's, it's, it's quite attractive, to be honest. It's nothing, I don't ever, I don't foresee it ever being a danger, it's a very slow-moving stream, but it's very clean water.
Oh, you wait till they keep praying for rain.
Yeah, it's very clean water, and I, I would also, I'd like to address your, your comment on the native ground. It is, it's not watered or irrigated now, it's, at its height, it maybe hits a foot high, it's, it's not a real, it's, it's a water-tolerant, natural, native grass right now. Deer, saw fox out there the other day, there's raccoons, there's ducks, there's geese. It's, it, it looks pretty good right now, you know, and I, we've, we've taken that into consideration.
But right now, a $400,000 home isn't next door.
Pardon?
Right, right now, a $400 home isn't next door. When it, when it's in its native area, looking native is a good thing, but when it's in a development, I'm not sure that native is the best choice.
I will guarantee you that those lots will be the very first ones sold. Everybody wants that view out the back, and they would much rather look at native vegetation than a backyard. Same with the canal area, those, I live next to a canal, and I've been in real estate... real estate 35 years, so yes, I am an expert at that.
Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of questions. First thing, and this is probably more for staff than, than you, but going back to Councilmember Whitelock's comment, is there going to be a physical barrier from the canal, or from the property there on the east edge to the canal, or could they decide they want to build something to access the canal?
No, under our ordinance, a fence is required, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, that answers that question, and then the, the other ones are just a comment for Gary, and, and that is that, when I remember this coming up several council meetings ago, you had a lot of support from the neighboring residents for being very involved with them from the very beginning, and I just want to thank you for that, and, and being a wise developer by engaging the neighboring, by the neighbors, the residents that will surround this parcel, and, and listening to them, and, and doing things that help you and, and support them as well, and support our community. So I just wanted to thank you for that.
Thank you, thank you for that.
Thank you, Mayor. That's all I have.
Councilmember Lamb.
Thank you, Mayor. So getting back to the soil, I'm not a developer, you are. Kind of walk us through my worry of building these homes and having them slide off the side of the hill. What do you guys do to mitigate that?
Love the comment. We, we paid for three geotech and soils report, because that is art, see, I don't want, for those of you who've been here a little bit, I was the person who originally was marketing Maple Hills, and I saw what went down, what went down out there, and I do not want to be dealing with that problem of people losing that. We, and, and so, you know, just being a developer doesn't make you an expert on soil, and so we pay.
But you work with them more than I do.
Yeah, I, I do. I know more. I don't, I don't know a lot about it a little bit. We rely a lot on their ability to give us, we, we pay them to give us their expert opinion, and then make sure that the city engineer is okay with that before we get an approval. And, and we went to a lot. There's going to be 40, 44,000 cubic yards of dirt moved off of this, and a lot of that's going to be infill brought in, because it, it's a concern of ours as well. This is, this hasn't been a cheap endeavor whatsoever. I hate to bring up economics, but it's, it's a very expensive subdivision to do.
And thank you, because as you know, developing homes, the first person they go after is the developer, and then the second person they go after is the city, so I just want to make sure we've got our bases covered before something gets, that gets put in. And then I want to address Allen's concern about traffic. Since I do live off 1300, this is wonderful. Forty homes compared to 225 apartments? I'll take that into view. Thank you.
Thanks for that. We lined up the street based on the recommendation from you. The north entrance is directly, it's directly parallel from the existing subdivision to the west.
Councilmember McConaughey. Thank you, Mayor. No questions for Mr. Cannon, but based on the information and findings set forth in the staff report and upon evidence and explanations received today, I move that we approve the preliminary development plan for Brinkerhoff Bluff PRD located at 7653 South 1300 West in the PRD MSHO zone, planned residential development, medium density, 3.1 to 5.5 units per acre with a senior housing overlay.
Councilmember Burton.
I second all of that.
We have a motion by Councilmember McConaughey, a second by Councilmember Burton. Discussion of the motion. Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Cannon for taking the time to work with the, work with the neighbors and make sure that this development was done right. These neighbors have had some interesting experiences in the recent past, and it's been very refreshing to have you actually work with them, work with us, and come up with something that looks as good as this does. So thank you, and we're expecting very, very good things upon completion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Burton. I would like to echo Councilmember McConaughey's comments. Having the public come and say yes, they like what the developers do, and instead of fighting against them, is a refreshing thing, so. Thanks for being refreshing.
Thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
Mayor Writing?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Vote passes seven in favor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now move to consent items, and I've asked to have consent item 6A pulled. Councilmember Lamb.
I was going to reiterate, Chris said earlier, do we want to do that break right now or after consent items?
After, is that because that's?
Never mind.
Somebody like to make a motion on the other side. Councilmember Whitelock.
Okay. I'll move that we approve consent items B through D.
Councilmember Burton. We have a motion by Councilmember Whitelock, and a second by Councilmember Burton. A discussion of the motion. Seeing none, let's vote.
Mayor Writing?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
The vote passes seven in favor.
So item number seven, it will be a discussion on consent item 6A. Councilmember Whitelock.
I just had a question. When we're looking at this, there were only two bidders, and the difference in those bids was pretty significant, like over 100,000. I'm trying to get there, but I'm not getting there soon enough. Yeah, 197 versus 371. So my question is, have we worked with TDM before? And I should have sent it to Brian, and then I would have gotten the answer. But I didn't. I sent it to the name on the agenda.
Sorry, I was focused on something else.
Sorry, Brian.
I apologize. I believe we have worked with TDM before.
And have been happy?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So would you like to make a motion then on that item?
Okay. In light of that, I will move that we approve consent item 6A.
Councilmember Anderson. Motion by Councilmember Whitelock, a second by Councilmember Anderson. Discussion of the motion. Seeing none, let's vote.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Mayor Writing?
Yes.
Vote passes seven in favor.
And I have a motion to take a seven-minute break.
Twelve-minute break.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's reconvene. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and move on to our workshop. And which is a discussion regarding the mayor and council salary for the mayor council form of government beginning January sixth, two thousand and twenty. I want to begin with allowing Mr. Barker, who came late. Following Mr. Barker's comments, we'll move to Corbin. And anyone else would like to speak after Mr. Barker. And then we'll go from there to Corbin. Mr. Barker.
It's a workshop, so it's just open. Open the mics.
My name is Bart Barker, twenty-three, twenty-four, Henry Ellis Court, West Jordan. Last week at the Utah City Management Association and the Utah League of Cities and Towns Conference. This city was well represented by your council and city manager. And it was impressive to see that kind of involvement and activity. And I appreciate it. We have a good council right now. And I think the city's in good hands. I am going to speak in support of an appropriate salary for the mayor. I haven't seen anything on the, in the details of the staff report about council salaries, but this is going to be, I think soon, the third largest city in the state. And the second largest with this form of government. And I think it's important that our city set a salary for mayor that is sufficient to attract the most competent, the most talented and experienced and skilled candidates possible. I'm not going to be one of those. But I've spoken with some who have considered it, who are very, very qualified. But in some cases would have a hard time running for mayor at the current salary. Or even a hundred thousand dollars. I believe it has to be in the range of one hundred and twenty to one hundred and thirty, as it is for other cities in our size range. I'd recommend toward the higher end of that. Second, I would recommend that it be indexed to the employees annual raises with a public hearing as part of your public hearing each year as you're setting your tax rate. And your budget also include that, mention, mention the, the elected officials. Because this council went twenty years without changing the salary. And it's very, very difficult to do, especially after it's been five or ten years. And if a council member was worth fifteen hundred dollars in two thousand and twenty, they, that means each year after that, they become worth less. And we're attracting a less capable potential council member. So I think, I think we need to make this feasible for our best. And I know that serving as elected official is a service. It's an altruistic thing. But there are some qualified people in the city for whom a salary in the range that I talked about would be a sacrifice. But taking it down to, say, a hundred thousand, it wouldn't be a sacrifice. It would be impossible. So that's, that's my recommendation. I encourage all the council members to, to vote on this and, and support this kind of a salary. The new mayor is going to set the tone for the executive branch, create precedence that will be with us for a very long time.
Thank you. Corbin. Is there anyone else that would wish to speak to this? Come forward, please. No, Corbin.
Sorry. I should elect first. My name is Rob Bennett. I live at twenty-one eighty-two West Par Circle in West Jordan. As elected officials, we are not employees. We are public servants. We draw the most capable representatives, not by how much we can pay them, but for the good they can choose to do by sacrificing a time period of their lives. If we were competing to pay the most capable CEO to run our company, it might be reasonable to look to pay more than other businesses to attract the best talent to manage our company. But if we are inspiring citizens in the community to run for office with dollar signs in their eyes, we are not going to get the best citizen statesmen and women who understand sacrifice for the whole before collecting a hundred thousand dollars in salary. Please keep the salary of the mayor fair for the position, but not encouraging people to run for the office for the wrong reasons. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to address this, please?
Let me just take a moment and go back a few years. When I was mayor, I was paid eighteen thousand dollars a year. And that was part-time at home. Because I spent forty to fifty hours a week working. And I pushed hard to raise that salary that, that Mayor Johnson put into effect after me. It needs to be adequate. I could argue like, like Bart did for a higher salary. I could also argue the way Rob just did. And I'm not sure which is the best. But when I, when I got on the council the first time, I didn't even know there was pay. I got on to help this city. And I think, I think Rob's maybe got the right idea that, that we need people that really are interested in serving and not necessarily looking for a career. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to address this? Come forward.
Taylor Roth, R O T H. You already have my phone number earlier on the records. On the subject of compensation for council members and the mayor. My idea might be a little bit radical, but I agree on both sides of the issue. That there definitely needs to be compensation that's appropriate to live off of. And it should be low enough to inspire that people are running for the right reasons. With that in mind, has it been considered to provide kind of like a room and board arrangement, like a, a mayor house and council member housing? And then perhaps like a living stipend each month during the service? That way you can still have a family while fulfilling the obligations or the duties of the council and mayor positions. But in a way, it's a very direct thing and I dare say that it adds the component that it begins to build kind of an energy in that home, such as the White House has for the nation. In that the elected officials go through that location and each adds their own little touch to it. And that becomes kind of an embodiment within the community that we can turn to and look and say, that is where our elected officials reside. When they're in service to the community. So that would be my suggestion for a way to perhaps move forward in an amicable manner. Because I feel like if you're receiving a place to live and food and you have a modest stipend, then every, everything is met as far as your temporal or physical needs. And then you're free to take care of the community, which is what the responsibility of the role is all about. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the council? Saying that, Corbin, we'll turn it up to you then.
Council, tonight at the work session, we're gonna, I'd like to turn most of the time over to Melena to share with you the research she's compiled regarding mayor salaries. I just want to share two points with you. The first is the urgency of this discussion. The reason we're having it tonight is because, as you know, the filing period starts the first week of June. We felt it staff important to have, have a salary in place prior to the filing period so that those who filed to be a candidate for the mayor's seat know what to expect in terms of a salary. Second, some of the research Melena did is based on the Utah League of Cities and Towns cluster analysis. And let me just give you a brief background on that so you have some sense of why we compared with the cities we did compare with. The Utah League of Cities and Towns did a very extensive research project about six or seven years ago to cluster cities into like groupings. That cluster analysis is based on a very wide array of factors, including population size, growth patterns, land use patterns, tax base, tax use and services and so on. West Jordan City is in Cluster A. It's the major cities cluster. That cluster of cities includes about a dozen other cities that are determined by this thorough analysis to be the cities most like West Jordan in terms of tax base, population, services provided, commercial base of the city and so on. For example, other cities in that cluster include Ogden, Provo, Orem, Sandy, West Valley City and West Jordan. So as Ms. Murray did her analysis, she looked at the cities that are in this, this League of Cities and Towns cluster and then looked at cities that are within that cluster within the same form of government that we're going to. As well as additional research. So with that, like, I'd like, if I may, mayor, to turn it over to Ms. Melena Murray.
Please.
Thank you. As Corbin had said, we did look at several criteria. We used very similar research as we look at staff salaries in looking at these recommendation for the salary for the mayor. Some other things that we also took a look at was a study that Sandy City had prepared when they were moving to a strong form of government with the mayor council. I've attached that information, which is labeled as Attachment B. If we take a look at the documents, that gives you some indication of how they came about with their recommendation for a salary. Please keep in mind as well that this was done in early two thousand and eighteen. Since then, and then I will review some information, the salaries have increased. So what's important to think about as we take a look at a recommendation for the salary for the mayor is we don't want to lag the market. We want to be competitive. We also want to lead the market with an appropriate salary that is going to bring the right individuals to come as they run for the mayor. We need to look at the salary and the increase of the workload for this position. Another factor we looked at is, as I mentioned, is an independent study in taking a look at in the cluster that was recommended by ULCT, which takes a look at cities that are comparable in tax, in population and how those cities are run. So I'm gonna actually scroll through if we look on the screen. And again, the ULCT cluster report was done in two thousand and sixteen. So some of the changes with the salary, we'll review those as we take a look at when these other cities start to take a look at the adjustment that they will be making with their new fiscal year. Some background information that we reviewed earlier that was done by ULCT. I'm gonna go through some of these slides pretty quickly. So I think what's important is get to the actual increase in the pay. I've also highlighted where you'll see the ULCT. The ones that are highlighted are the cities that are representative of a strong mayor council form of government. If you look at Attachment B, that is a study that was been done by Sandy City, taking a look at very similar factors as we are looking at now in a recommendation for the salary for the mayor. And then if you look at Attachment C, you'll see where it is actually highlighted. Or actually, I should say bolded where we look at Murray, Ogden, Provo. We did look at Salt Lake City. They are not within the cluster. They are a much larger city, but I wanted to put that information in there. And then I also have listed Taylorsville. They're not in the cluster that is similar to our city. But we wanted to take a look at going from the north part of the valley all the way down to the southern end of the valley. The difference with Taylorsville is to keep in mind they have outsourced their public safety, UPD and UFA. And their public works department only has one full-time staff because they also outsource their public works department. So you'll see that their range for, or their salary for the mayor is much lower. But I think that's indicative of the staff representation. It's a much smaller representation, so I don't think that that's a good representation of what we would be looking at if we looked at all of the strong mayor form of government. And then I also listed what we currently have for our mayor, which obviously is not in the strong mayor form of government. There's some information below that table that indicates information on these cities that I have bolded with the strong mayor form of government. Now this report, this next page, which is part of the Attachment C, that shows the salary at the time that this study was done. There has been some changes and then taking a look at how Sandy did their study where they averaged out to take a look at how they would make a recommendation of where to start for their mayor. And then I'm actually going to bring up the document that focuses on the current salary for our, for marriage. I'm sorry, for a strong form of government with the mayor. And you'll see that the salaries have already increased. So we need to take that into consideration. The initial data is about two years old. If we get ready to start our filing, we need to make the right recommendation to be competitive for January two thousand and twenty. So you'll see Mary, Murray, theirs is at one fifteen, three ninety-four. Ogden is now at a hundred and twenty-three, six seventy-four. They do get some additional pay, both of those cities. Provo is at a hundred and twenty and Sandy is now at a hundred and twenty-seven, five. And if we average out those salaries, they're at one twenty-one. They do offer the same, similar benefits that we currently offer to our mayor that we want to continue as we move forward with the change in government to offer those benefits as well. And you'll see where these were updated and this information was run through and which was verified with the cities through our tech net systems which gathers all of the data of the surrounding cities in the public sector. So our recommendation, as was discussed, I believe in a previous council meeting, is we want to recommend starting the salary at a hundred and twenty thousand. Now, what I have found with talking to some of these cities is they don't actually have a range where you have a minimum and a maximum. Some cities recommend you start at one amount and then the mayor will get a cost of living increase. Some cities do an average of what all of the employees receive at their annual evaluation or the cost of living adjustment. I know some cities are now requesting a higher cost of living, so that will impact the mayor's salary for each year that the individual serves for the term. So that's something to consider is do we set a salary at one twenty and then it has a defined increase each year? Or do we take a look at other cities, how they are either doing a cost of living adjustment or they're doing an average of what their employees get that impacts the increase for the mayor? So I'm gonna stop right there, open it up to questions before we talk about council salary.
Councilmember Whitelock.
Elena, at some point, could you forward to me, or probably to all of us, I'd like to know what all our department heads are, are making? Because I think that's significant because what I view this role as and maybe what you view it as might be different. And, and I want to compare it before I give my opinion. Thank you.
Councilmember Lan.
Since we're not really going by names here, because it doesn't work that, I'll go. I want to throw out the word competitive right now. When I hear us talking about we need to make our mayor competitive with other cities, I'm kind of turned off by that. When you live in a city and you say, well, Salt Lake pays one forty, I'm gonna move to Salt Lake so I can make one forty. That's what I see when you put the word competitive in there. Now, if I'm talking about competitive for city manager, for police chief, for fire chief, totally fine with that. But as far as saying we're not competitive, basically what you're saying is we're trying to attract people from outside the city to, to pay one twenty for a mayor. Am I against one twenty right now? No, I'm still thinking about it. But I worry when you use the word competitive because I don't think we need to be competitive as far as getting salary for a mayor with other cities. Can we compare? Can we contrast? Sure. That's fine. We can say We can say, "West Jordan's only 89,000, Provo's 120." Why, where should we be at? But I really don't want to look at this as a competitive thing, because we're not trying to attract a person based off of what other cities are paying. People aren't moving to cities to be mayor. You only be mayor in the city you live in. Former Mayor Newton said it correctly when he first got on here, didn't even know a council member got paid. He did it because he wanted to serve. And I, I think, I think that should be the first thing, is a mayor wants to serve, wants to serve a city in the city he lives in. So if I take off my council member cap right now, and I, I, I'm sitting in the, in the audience, thinking about how much I want the mayor to be paid, the first thing I'm going to think of, and I know people are going to say this to me as a council member, "120? Are you kidding? I don't make that much." There's going to be a lot of people that are going to say that. Some people will say right now that 90,000 for the mayor's too much, and I get that. I think all of us in this room here understand why 120 is the number we're getting at, but I do want us to think about, do we need to be competitive with other cities? No, I don't think so. We're, we're talking about West Jordan, we're talking about people that live in West Jordan. Nobody's moving to West Jordan to be mayor. And Chris, as, we've talked about it before, there are people that say, "Well, I want one for mayor, because that's less than I make." I'm okay with that. If you're making over 120,000 and you don't want to be mayor because it pays too little, stay in your job. Live your job, enjoy that job, because you're getting paid well. Maybe there's another time in your life when you'll be able to be the mayor and be able to take a pay cut. But I really think we need to be careful, as we're using the word competitive, that this isn't about competition. This is about what's right for the city and what's right for the mayor's salary.
I just, I want to just comment on that same topic, if I can interject, and that's, I, I totally agree. Comparing with other cities is useful, but not, for that very reason. You can't be in Provo and say, "Well, West Jordan mayor pays more, I'm going to run for that one." It, it works for congressional districts. Apparently you can run for those across lines, but you can't do that in the city. And they all pay the same anyway. But what we need to be competitive with is the job of the person who we want to be mayor. What are they making in the private sector? What are they making wherever they are that would not, not entice them to come for a raise, but entice them to come to the point where it wouldn't hurt too much? Do we want, I mean, we're, we're not going to attract a, a city manager who makes 165,000 a year to take a $45,000 pay cut, unless that's not going to be painful for that person. So it's, it's who do we want to be the mayor? And what is that person worth outside of the city? And that's, that's, I think, the number we got to kind of try and, try and land on. It's not, you're right, it's not what the mayor of Provo makes, it's what the mayor of West Jordan should make, or could make elsewhere, or what we're comfortable paying in order for that person to not, in order not to exclude the good candidates that we want to get. And I, I think that's, that's just an, an important thing to, to weigh in.
So just a reminder, these are open mics, so just jump in there when you're.
Earlier, when we started, you were specifically calling people out, so.
I forgot. We're open mics, so just jump in.
All right, so if, i- i- if I may, then, th- there's, there's a couple thoughts running through my mind on this one. Competitive? I agree, that's not the right word. We're not trying to be competitive with the private industry. If we were, this would be a figure three, four, five times more than what we're looking at. We're not trying to be competitive with the private industry, because it is service. I think we should have a compensation that's fair for the work that's being requested. From what I see here, it looks like that's somewhere between the 120 to 130 range. As I look at some of these cities that are out there, there's a lot that's already been built out. West Jordan still has a lot of growth. There's a lot of, there's a lot of responsibility in this role, and I think 120 to 130 is about the right place for that to be. Now, when it comes to philosophy of the person running for mayor, I, I, I can't remember where it was said, but somebody said something about us deciding who we wanted to be mayor. Well, that's, that's not our role, that's the role of the residents. I think our role is to find a salary that's fair for the work that's being requested. And then if those who are running want to take it upon themselves to say, "You know what? I'll, I'll do it for less, or take less than this," that, that's on them. If we try and undercut and pay something less than what's fair for the role, we're going to limit the, the pool of potential candidates and limit the choice of the residents. We should really, in, in my perspective, have something that's fair and equitable, and then let the, let the residents decide through the election process what, who they want to represent them. If we keep it relatively low, what we've seen, i- if we keep it relatively low, you run the risk that the only people who will be able to, financially able to run for mayor are those who are financially independent, who are retired, who are not dependent on a paycheck. There's a lot of fantastic people that fall into that category that would do very, very well for the job, but it's not necessarily fair to the residents to limit it to just that small section of the population. By having a fair salary, we open it up to a lot more people who could potentially run for that office, and, and potentially better represent the citizens of the city. The other thought that I had is I want to make sure that by having a fair wage for the mayor, I think that will help ensure that we have fair wages for the other employees as well, because inevitably there'll be the comparison, "Well, what are the different, like, as was brought up, what are the different department heads compared to the mayor? Well, the mayor's the one who's in charge, so shouldn't this be less?" Well, if we artificially deflate the, the salary that we're willing to pay for the mayor, how is that going to impact these other roles? I know that we've had some substantial changes in compensation to various positions that we've recently hired for, because they were significantly undermarketed. And we've seen, Councilmember Jacob pointed out today that we've seen a lot of change in the reputation of the city over the last two years. I credit a lot of that to the team that Mr. Brickie's been able to build. But in order to build that team, we had to revisit the compensation that was allocated for many of these positions. I worry that if, in the new form of government, we, we keep the salary artificially low, below what's a, a fair, a fair rate for the, for the job being provided, are we going to find ourselves back in the same position a few years down the road? On a little bit of a tangent note, I, I know that there are a number of folks on the dais who are thinking about running for mayor, and some had suggested that perhaps they should, while participating in the discussion tonight, when the vote does come up, to formally take direction and, and codify the salary, they suggested perhaps excluding themselves from that vote as a potential conflict of interest. I would point out that the conflict of interest as defined by state law wouldn't exist in that situation, because you're not voting on something that's going to be yours, rather just something that you're going to try to run for. And I'd encourage everybody on the dais to vote. This is very significant, and will have a, a large bearing on where the city goes over the next four years, and I think it would be appropriate for every member of the council to vote on that. The other thought is that by increasing the salary to a rate that is fair and open, I mean, obviously, no matter what happens with salaries, there's going to be some public criticism, which is fine and which is fair. But by increasing that salary to something that is, that is fair and equitable to the market, it opens up the competition, and any candidate for mayor could legitimately state that while they did increase the, the, while they did support an increase in the salary for the mayor, they also did so recognize that they were increasing the competition, lowering the likelihood that they personally would be the ones benefiting from that, and increasing the number of candidates possible within the city by making sure we have that fair salary that's, that, that fits in the market. I'm not suggesting we should do anything exorbitant, as we, as we see here, I think the 120 to 130 range is, is very appropriate, but I just wanted to share those thoughts and, and ask that you give them some consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. So here are my thoughts. I agree with Chad, I think competitive is, is a bad term, and, and I don't, and I'm okay to compare us with other cities, but I don't know that we really compare. Our, our average household income in West Jordan is 72,000. Many times, that's two incomes bringing that in. When our mayor's compensation was increased last time, I agreed with Mayor Johnson. She was putting in full-time hours, and we were seeing some benefits of that, I believe. And I believe that it should be a full-time position in order to represent our city, that there are so many meetings every day that you could be going to, representing the city. And why is that important? Because if you're at the table, you're part of the dialogue. If you're not at the table, you're left out. And, and that's happened to our city a lot in the past. But when they increased it, an interesting thing happened. We saw an uptick of a lot of candidates. There were ten, I believe, that ran that year, and I was like, "Oh, my gosh. You can't tell me they weren't coming, because there was a huge increase." Because as I interviewed each of them, it was like, huh, yeah, this is a substantial pay increase for you. That's why you're running. I don't know that I want to incentivize people that are running for the money. I want to have people that want to serve, because this is a service, not a job. And you got to love what you're doing, or why you're doing it, or you're not going to do a good job, and you're not going to represent our city. And I want someone that's going to represent our city because they want to, not because the money is there. And when the average citizen household income is only 72,000, I have a hard time saying that our mayor is worth $40,000 more than our average home's income, not necessarily the individual, because I think a lot of times that's two incomes. And when the charter was written, I believe, it was written that we have to have an administrator to run our city. So I don't see a huge difference from what we're doing now to what we'll be doing in January, other than instead of manager, it'll be administrator, and instead of having seven bosses, they'll have one boss. So while the mayor will have some additional authority, the way it was written, we're still going to have that person. So I've been reaching out and speaking to a lot of people. On Facebook, definitely, they're in favor of increasing substantially. But when I talk to people one-on-one, it's very interesting to me that, that they're like, "Yeah, maybe not. Maybe it's not the best idea to go up substantially." I think we have many, especially as you pointed out, Councilwoman McConaughey, we have many terrific employees in our city currently. A big thanks to Mr. Brickie for attracting and, and getting some great people to join our team, and putting people in positions where, where they're well-suited. So I'm struggling a lot, because I don't feel I'm hiring a CEO to run my city, because the mayor comes and goes, usually more often than a CEO, especially in our city. What I want is someone that represents our city well, and I'm not sure that that's a skill set that needs a salary of 130, 120,000. So I'm really struggling with this. It makes me sad that we don't have more people here. I hope that more citizens will come when this is on our agenda to vote on. And I think we all have to remember that it's not just that dollar amount, there's a pretty good compensation package, too, that a lot of employees don't get. In addition, our mayor gets a, a phone allowance and a car allowance. So there's a lot to this. It's a really complicated thing, and I don't think it's as easy as we won't get good candidates if we're not paying enough. That's not what the mayor is. The mayor is a service position, and as long as we have good employees with us, it'll be great.
Who wants to go next? On my way here today, I got a call from Councilman McConaughey, and we were talking about this very thing. And I want to bring this up, because when he's talking, he, without using my name, talked about me specifically, and he said there are some people who are running for mayor that thought they weren't going to comment on this, and I told him that I was going to abstain when it came time to vote, because I didn't want it to appear that I was voting for my own salary. And I said, "And if I vote for a raise in the mayor's salary, it'll look like I'm voting to give me more money. And if I vote against it, it'll be like I'm trying to keep my competition down, so I have less people who are running against me." So, so I thought, "I'll lose either way." And then after that conversation and some other conversations with others, I decided that I am not the mayor, I am not voting as the mayor, I am a council member, and I should continue to serve as a council member, so I will participate in these conversations, and I will vote when that time comes, and whatever comes after that will be after that.
I guess that's the benefit of having A in your last name, is to jump up top of the screen. Did you?
We're not taking turns, we're all just chiming in, so.
We're all just chiming in. I, I.
Begged me to interrupt you at least three times.
I, I value the, the comments of Councilmember Burton and, and all of you up here. I, too, am contemplating running, because I, I think the, the role of mayor is probably a little deeper under this new form of government than what Councilmember Whitelock alluded to, because in this, in the new form of government, the, the mayor is, has to make some very tough And there's a responsibility that, that falls with that. We can't, we can't run it the same way that we're running it now. That, that's going to go away on January 6th at 11:59, the way that we're currently existing. Likewise, all seven of us up here could say that we're running for mayor, and we still have to make a decision of what we're going, what, what the position's going to have, what the responsibilities are. And like we just discussed earlier during the cannabis discussion, taking baby steps and putting in some restrictions, I think that's what this dialogue is for, is to find out, you know, certain parameters. So for example, in Sandy, it's public knowledge, it's in the news, the mayor gave himself a, a raise.
Because he could.
Because he could. I want to make sure that we have checks and balances, whether it's index, or whether it has to come before the council. I want to have some of these checks and balances, so no matter who runs for mayor and who gets elected as mayor, we've set the parameters so that we have a transparent government. We have a government that we're putting the best foot forward, because this form of government is going to be, is going to last generations. And it's important that the first mayor that is selected and voted by the residents, not by us, has the tools at their disposal to get our course to where we need to be, so that we're economically viable, so that we can maintain low taxes, so that we can serve the residents. That's, that's the parameters I see in what we're trying to define in this work session this evening. Thanks.
And I just wanted to prove, I said he gave him some raise because he could, because he could, and that can happen with the next mayor. I don't have the full details of what's going to happen. We could set a number tonight, and they could still come back after the new year and go, "Well, I think it should be 130," and work a way in. So I'm not sure how we have a way to stop that when it happens, I'm not sure.
The council, council sets the budget, and part of that is the salary schedule.
Corbin Johnson jumped in there on that.
And just real quick, from what I understood, he had the authority to do it without the council, but then he cut, he went back because the citizens went after him for it.
Correct, but that's in their, that's in the rule. In, in, in Sandy's format at the time.
Corbin was there.
Yeah, Corbin was there, he could speak to this.
I think the monster too.
Go ahead.
Just jump in, Corbin.
I'll yield.
If I may, when you change the form of government, I, the salaries, one thing you'll see in the, in the budget we are bringing forward, is the salary ranges of every position in the city attached to the budget. So when you, when you as a council approve a budget, and you approve a half-million-dollar budget in public works for streets, for salaries, it will list each position that is included in that bu, that particular budget, as well as a salary range. We would suggest that this, as you determine a mayoral salary, it be included in that budget, so that every year when the council approves the budget, it's approving the salary. So there's no question, there's no question about what the budget should be, there's no question about what the salary is, and the authority, the budgetary authority rests with the council. The executive authority will rest with the mayor, but the budgetary, budgetary authority stays on the council side.
Corbin, correct me if I'm wrong, the reason that he didn't cut his salary back because the council, he cut his salary back because he got public input. The council never told.
You're going to make me recount some history. In Sandy, in Sandy.
The council didn't make him cut his salary back, he cut it back because of public input.
In Sandy, they had a longtime, long-serving mayor who, who, by way of informal agreement with the council. by way of informal agreement with the council, kept a certain salary. And and so there was not a formal policy with the council as to what the mayor's salary should be. It was not, elected officials at the time did not have their salary ranges denoted in the budget. When the election occurred and a new mayor came in, because there was not a council policy at that time setting the mayor budget, the new mayor could set his own salary. That's when, that's when it came out that he set his own salary higher than the previous mayor. He did get a lot of public, public outcry. He re, he recanted, reduced his own salary. And then after that, the council set the salary and the council set a policy setting the mayoral salary.
So we had done that previously and Corbin wasn't here for this one. But prior council, somebody just made the suggestion of discussing the salary of the mayor and putting that on the agenda. And we found ourselves in front of a judge later that week as the yeah, it was, it was an interesting week. So the, neither side is perfect. While I'm rambling, I, I just want to reiterate my perspective that while we may have different perspectives and philosophies on what kind of person we think should run for mayor, I think our job as a council is to separate ourselves from that and approve a salary that's in line with what the role is asking. And then residents are the ones who are able to decide, do I think this person's running for the money or do I think this person is running because of their dedication to the city and I think they'll do good? You could have somebody who would be a fantastic mayor, but do we want to instantly rule them out because we put the salary below, below what's fair and reasonable? As a, as an individual voter, maybe, maybe that's a hard line that you draw and that's really the quality that you're looking for. But as an individual voter, the, the role of this body is to set the policy. And my, my feeling is that the policy should be, set the compensation for what is fair for the job and then let the voters decide from there. That's, that, I, I, I think there should be a pretty straightforward discussion, although I think it's one twenty to one thirty. If HR is coming back saying, we think it should start at one twenty, I can support that and have that included in the budget. And then I think we're, I, I'd be ready to move on with that. I, I just want to try and distance my own personal opinions from, from impacting the sour and potentially diminishing the choices available to the residents.
I think that's a good point. To your point and to Kayleen's point, Alan's point. What is fair for what the duties of the mayor are and will be? Kayleen touched on, on what the mayor's, mostly what the mayor does now, go to a lot of meetings, represent the city. A lot of external functions. The new mayor will have a lot of internal functions, functions that are now being handled by the city manager. So the question is, what role will the city, or a part of the question is, what role will the city administrator then play as compared to what the mayor will do? Is the sum total of duties shared right now between the city manager and the mayor? Is that sum total going to stay the same? And if it is, should that sum total of a hundred and sixty-five plus eighty-nine five still be the sum total and we just divide the line differently? Because the mayor will do some things that the city administrator does. Go ahead and jump in.
Or put it in a big bucket, turn it over to the mayor and let them decide how much they want to keep and how much they want to put to administrator.
No, I don't want to do that.
It, it depends on who you elect, what they choose to do.
Well, true, but, but we're going to, we're going to set a salary and that's just something that's going to play into my internal calculation is Mr. Bricky is doing some things and the mayor is doing some things. And Corbin does some things. Maybe we can throw his in into the same bucket as well. And now the things that those three people do, let's just assume that they're the same three people after the election. They may or may not be. And that applies to all three theoretically. But let's just assume that they're the same three people after the election. What will the duties, division of duties look like and who should be compensated accordingly? Should a city administrator make less than a city manager? Excuse me. It's just a question. And should that difference play into what a mayor makes in that form of government versus what we think this mayor is worth, not this mayor? I'm not passing comments on what you're worth, Jim. What's your life insurance? Never mind. But what this mayor's job is worth compared to what that person's job is worth and add those two together? Because that's kind of what we're changing. We're making the city manager an elected position and we're calling you mayor. So should we pay the mayor or will we pay the city manager now? Or because this mayor is going to still need a city manager that we're going to call a city administrator? I, I, I think my own calculations internally is it's going to cost more than just the sum total of that position plus this position. It's going to cost more. Somewhere there's going to be an increase that's necessary. And I think the people knew that when, when they elected this form of government. I think the people were sold a bill of goods if they didn't believe that.
Were you on that?
I, I thought it would. I, I voted no on putting it up. You'll recall. Anyway.
I was there.
You were there. So anyway, that's just, that's kind of where I am now. What I'm thinking going forward is, is how that division of duties is going to line up? What is going to be different? What's going to be the same? How much more will those two individuals or however many you want to throw into that bucket be doing than they're, than those positions are doing now? What's going to change? And how much is that change worth? Does that make sense?
Yeah, and I'll come back to the word competitive. I mean, we kind of already dug into competitive. Now the word they're throwing out is fair. So as I'm seeing the word fair is, we're discussing it, fair is seeing the average. Well, why are those salaries fair? Where did they get their numbers from? We don't know. I don't know how they got up to one twenty-seven in Sandy or one twenty-three in Ogden. Ogden has less people than West Jordan does. So I mean, is, is one twenty fair? Is one ten fair? I don't know.
I don't know either.
Let me just remind everyone that the most important thing that needs to happen tonight is what we can put in the budget. That's what, that's really what Corbin's looking for, I think, is a number to put in the budget for the because they have to present the budget to us as a council next week. And they want to include that in there.
And if I might carry off on what Councilman McConaughey said, I think that's a great idea. Put that bucket in there and make that for the city administrator, the mayor, a certain dollar and let the mayor, because that mayor's going to choose the city manager. And that mayor, when he chooses this, not city manager, city administrator, when they choose that, if he thinks he wants someone that needs all this and he's willing to give in.
Give up his own money?
In, in my defense, I was being facetious because it appeared that that's what Sandy had done. And I was, I was trying to, it, it was an attempt at humor that struck too close to reality, so I.
I wouldn't want to put two hundred and sixty thousand dollars into a bucket and say, mayor, decide how much your city administrator is worth.
Maybe further down the road.
I don't think I want a city administrator. I'm not even going to have one. I'll just keep it all.
Because they're going to work together as a team and if they don't work together as a team, it's not going to happen. And I don't think they could do it without.
Right, but in, remember in Utah, there's no recall election. So if the city mayor decides to do something crazy, you're stuck with that for four years.
So while I recognize the, the value of the comment about, okay, what are each of these three roles going to be doing? Based on where we're at in the calendar and the budget cycle, I, I don't know that we have the luxury of more prolonged conversations about each one of those. So if we focus just on.
So wait, you want us to just pass it and then figure it out later? Because I'm not okay with that. I think we do need to have information to make a good decision.
Did you mean pass it and read it later?
For, for each of the, for each of the different roles that are out there, I have no problem just focusing on the role of the mayor. I don't think we need to open it up and say, okay, what specifically are going to be the duties here? What specifically are going to be the duties of the other roles? Because the mayor does have a lot of leeway in what's delegated and what they retain for themselves. I don't know that we can really get into that, that level of detail. So.
So I have a basic question. How are we going to pay for this? How are we going to pay for it? Because I'm told we don't have funds. So how are we going to pay for it? Because if we're saying we're increasing by forty thousand dollars, we've got to find out forty thousand dollars in the budget. That means, do we have to cut something somewhere? Is it worth cutting it? As, as Zach always says, you know, well, are we work, you know, we don't want to cut fire and police. So what are we going to, you know, what, what are we willing to cut to pay for this? Or is it going to be a tax increase that you're going to propose? I kind of need to know some of this information before I cast my vote on it, on a salary. Because I think they are important things for my checkbook and many others.
Let me just mention too, that we won't be voting tonight on the finals. We're just giving the suggestion.
But that's what I need before I can say what I want, Corbin. I need information that I don't have.
But to get that information, the first question that we have to answer is, okay, what do we want to pay for the role of the mayor? And then we can start backfilling and saying, okay, well, here's what the gap is, where are the different places we can pull? Unless we don't feel like the ma, the role of the mayor is important, in which case we do the rest of the budget and we just say, whatever's available can get used for that.
Well, can't we analyze what we have? I, I don't think it has to be one way or the other. I think we can get more data to make a better decision. So we can, we can find out, you know? You know, we can ask our finance director. Where would, where, where would be a good place to get these funds? Because if it ultimately means that after we look at our budget, then we have to do a tax increase, then that's the question that you have to know. Are you willing to vote for another tax increase to increase the mayor's salary? And I think all of us have different opinions on that, but without the information, how can we make a I can't make the best decision without more information. I need a little more and not just, well, we'll figure it out later.
Yep, Councilmember Whitelock, if, if I can jump in, I've been asking for several months that we have this discussion before May. And we're having a discussion in May. And unfortunately, one of the stresses that we're now going to face, I'm using that word a lot tonight, is that we have to have a, a tentative budget rather quickly. And we have to adopt a budget next month. And so the, the discussion and dialogue, even though I've been asking since probably December, January, you know, when are we putting this on the, on the, on the agenda? I agree, we need more, we need additional information. We're still working, or I shouldn't say we, I'm doing a budget at work, but Denise is doing a, a budget and still in the process of the budget. And fortunately or unfortunately, we're at this, we're at this process where we've got to come up with a guideline. The state statute is pretty clear on what the roles of, and responsibilities of the new mayor would be. I, I, I dare say, and I think Mayor Writing would agree with me, that it's not eight to five. It's probably more seven to seven, seven to, seven AM to ten PM some nights, weekends, holidays. Much like what we're doing on the council. I know that, I think I'm between driving around Dannen and.
You mean random businesses on the west side?
Random businesses on the west, west side. Answering emails, phone calls, attending meetings. I'm, I'm, you know, with, with eighteen thousand that the council members get, I'm probably making about two bucks, three bucks an hour. It's a lot of work. And I think Mayor Writing and I think even David Bricky would agree that his days are not eight to five. Most days, I think they're, they're, they're rather long. The, the new mayor is going to have long days, weekends and holidays. It's not an eight to five, come into work, answer some emails, take some phone calls. It's going to be decisions on HR matters. It's going to be decisions on bonds, land use. Some very intense, I imagine, discussion and dialogue that has political ramifications, that has real world ramifications. I think that is where this dialogue is shaping. And I, I don't disagree that, that it would be great to have more dialogue, but right now, we should have had this dialogue when we were still shoveling snow, even though it snowed less yesterday.
Yeah.
Right?
This morning.
Yeah. So, so I think what we need to define as a council is, we have a new mayor that has very defined responsibilities in state code, right? They, they are the decision maker, they are well, I mean, that pretty much sums it up, right? The decision maker, they, they
Chief executive.
Chief executive officer of the city. Who has a chief administrative officer who would be more like a COO. And I'm, and I'm not saying that we need to pay them competitively. I agree completely that we're not in a competition with Sandy and Murray and Taylorsville. But what are we asking this individual, whoever is going to be mayor, what are we asking this individual to do? Are we asking them to go up to the Capitol? Are we asking them to interface with residents? Are we asking them to go to mega sites in, in Reno to talk about economic development in our city? Are we asking them to do business visits?
We're asking them to serve.
Right, correct. We're asking them to serve.
And they're choosing to serve.
And they're choosing to serve. That's the dialogue, I think, we need to put the framework in the limited time that we have. I wish.
We got all night.
But we should be able to get some information.
Well, I don't think we're going to, I don't think we're going to have more information in the next hour or two.
We can get, we can get a number, we can get the salary of department heads in about ten minutes.
Tonight.
Right.
Well, we have to.
We aren't voting, but we're giving a number.
Okay, we're going to, we're going to have a non-binding vote. And this non-binding vote is simply to give staff a direction to put in the budget. That's all we need to do as far as, we need to give them a number to put in. It's, it would be non-binding because it'll come back on a resolution eventually. But for tonight, if somebody wanted to make a suggestion to give this, so that we can all vote on it, we can, we'll move ahead from there.
I'll go first. I'm not four one twenty right now. I still need more information. But I do know that we've already talked about it in the budgets. I do know that currently we have a budget set aside for another assistant city administrator. So I'm going to say right now, Kayleen, I will say no to a tax increase for a raise in mayor, right now. I'm not going to do a tax increase for a raise for mayor. But moving, so we can move forward with the budget, I'm going to put it out there. Let's look at the one twenty. Let's give that number to staff. That's Councilmember Lamb talking, not the council. And then we can make the decision when it comes back to us on the vote.
I could support that.
I, I don't know that, that a, that the mayor needs to make more than department heads. It's, it's one thing that a mayor gets that department heads don't get, is four years of job security. Can't be fired for four years. Department heads don't have that. We can fire them today. By the way, Brian, I've been meaning to talk to you. No, I'm sorry.
We can't, but.
We, we can't. We could direct, if we needed to, but we don't do that. But if we needed to, what I'm saying is, they don't have job security. They could go, they could do something and be fired tomorrow. A mayor is not going to do that unless it's like high crimes and misdemeanors kind of thing. There's no recall election in Utah. There's only expulsion for crime. I looked into this all about two and a half years ago, but it's been a little while. I used to have it all memorized. It was great. So that's, that's one thing the mayor gets that, that a department head doesn't get. There's, I, I don't think, I mean, the mayor now doesn't make more than a department heads. The city manager does, I think, more than most, if not all, the department heads. But I, I, so I don't think that number needs to be higher than those. And I don't think a hundred and twenty is, by the way. The number I had in my head coming into today was one ten. I'm, I'm not sure how comfortable I feel at one twenty.
Again, we don't have to make the final decision tonight.
Right, well, we got to come up with a number to throw to them, so. So I'm throwing out my thoughts.
And if it's one twenty in the budget and we change it to one ten later or one hundred, we can do that.
Right, I think though, the number that the majority of us agree on tonight is going to be the number that'll pass when we make it into an ordinance because we already agreed on it tonight. So it's going to be kind of rubber stamped. When a, when a proper vote comes up, I don't know that anybody will get information that will change their mind necessarily. Maybe, but I, I see it as, as, we're, we're trying to come up with a number. But also, it's, it's what else goes into that number, right? Because we talked about other ways the mayors get paid. There's, you know, benefits, car allowance, phone or communications allowance, however you want to define that. What other fringe benefits perks are there? What, what else goes into that? What, what are we looking at as a number compared to the number that we actually have now? If you go to the Transparency of Utah website, the mayor doesn't come out at eighty-nine five, he comes out at a hundred and six or, I don't remember what the number is, but it's, it's more than that, you know, there's retirement. There's the other things that go into that. So, and we don't come out at eighteen thousand either, by the way. Though, all that needs to be factored into this number as well, because retirement is a percentage of that salary.
It's all for good.
They're only a three minute, they're only a three minute.
My three minutes are up. It's, it's green now, so I don't know what's happening. Anyway, no, I, I've kind of said what I'm thinking. I'm, I'm leaning toward the one ten for the salary and leaving the, the benefits and the allowances the way they are currently. But that's, that's where I am. Feel free to talk me up or down. Or off the ledge.
So we had two that were in favor of putting one twenty in the budget, one for one ten.
I'll support one twenty.
I'll support 120.
Well, I'd be for 120 just to, to have it in the budget. Obviously, we can change it later, so there's four. I'd be comfortable with 120.
Mayor, if I may, for purposes of putting something in the budget, it's far easier for us to put a budget number in and then you decide you want something lower than to increase it. So if you're thinking 120 or lower, we'd, we'd like to give you a tentative budget where we just budget in that high number. And then you can come back later and determine a lower budget. If you go the opposite direction, it's harder for us.
Everybody's mic still on? Does anybody have any more discussion?
Except Zach.
We, is that the information you needed for tonight?
Councilmember Whitelock, you're still up.
Okay, then we will close the workshop and go to remarks. So Melanie, can you go back to everybody turn the mics off and we'll just go down to remarks? So Councilmember Burton, you're on for remarks?
I do have some remarks. As we talked about earlier, we have Comcast Care Day, which is happening this Saturday. Yes.
Yeah, two minutes noted on there.
Okay, let me know. I'll, I'll take the whole two minutes. Anyway, and as I mentioned to you, I am running the project over at Teton Estates. And my question is, and this is probably, I don't know, it's for you city manager or for Denise, but so for the expenses that I incur to purchase the breakfast, does that go through a parks budget? Through the city council budget? Or how would I?
Wouldn't that have to been approved prior to?
It's coming from the council budget. It's going to be approved by the council.
It does. So that's why I'm asking. In the past, I don't know where it came from, actually.
It come from the Dirk Burton for Mayor Fund.
It could. But I, I, it's, the first time we just had our cards we used, I'd just use that card. And the second time, I think it came out of the parks budget, but I don't know. I just turned in my receipt and it got reimbursed.
Brian's shaking his head no.
No, no parks, so.
Is this something that needs input from the council or something?
It only needs input from the council if it comes out of council contingency.
What are you thinking?
If it comes from council contingency, we'd have to vote on that.
So we just need to.
It needs to be agendaized.
Do we want, is that what we need to be doing? Mr. Bricky?
I, I'm going to follow the procurement process, is what I'll tell you of my best practices. So why don't we meet afterwards and figure out what it is that you're wanting to purchase and then if it's part of the park?
It's really not part of the parks. It's, it's breakfast food is what I'm.
It's separate from the regular Comcast.
It's separate from the regular Comcast. So Comcast is providing donuts and sandwiches for breakfast, where I'm providing the hot breakfast, so I'm cooking. So it's for the food for the breakfast. So we can talk afterwards.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember McConaughey?
You have 16 seconds. Sorry, you've seated the floor. See no other comments on here. I move that we move to closed session to discuss the character professional competence or physical or mental health of an individual, strategy session to discuss pending or reasonably imminent litigation, and/or strategy session to discuss the purchase, exchange or lease of real property, including any form of water rights and share, or shares. And adjourn from there no later than 10:00 PM.
I'll second. So we have a, a motion by Councilmember McConaughey, a second by Mayor Writing, discussion of the motion.
Was that 10:00 PM today?
Yep.
Okay.
Councilmember Burton. And Councilmember Writing, or not Council, whatever, Mayor Writing.
Yes.
Sorry, I apologize. Councilmember Jacob.
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey. Councilmember Whitelock.
No.
Councilmember Lamb.
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Vote passes six to one in favor.